Good morning and welcome to the December ninth, 2020 city council meeting. We're going to start off with the invocation and the pledge. And I'm honored to have my friend and pastor David Dykes here to give the invocation.
Would you join me as we pray? Father, you tell us in your word that we should count it all joy when we face all kinds of fiery trials. Because this causes us to produce endurance. And so we thank you, Lord, that you've given us the strength to endure during these remarkable unprecedented times. You've also said that we could ask for wisdom and you'd give it to those who ask. And so I pray for wisdom for Don Warren, our new mayor, for the city council. Give them wisdom as they lead our community through these difficult times. Father, we are glad to be a part of a community and a country whose motto is "In God We Trust." May we always keep our eyes on you during this time. We pray in Jesus' name, amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, David. All right, first order of business, we have minutes from the October fourteenth, 2020 meeting to approve.
Mr. Mayor, I move to approve the minutes as presented.
Motion by Westbrook, this is backwards. Motion by Westbrook, second by McGee. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
opposed? Minutes are approved as written. All right, A1.
Good morning, Mayor and Council.
Good morning.
Make sure y'all can hear me. First, I want to start off by introducing myself to some of our newer council members. My name is Angela Bennis. I am the Recreation Manager for the Parks and Recreation Department. I did serve as the Community Coordinator for our Keep Tyler Beautiful program for two and a half years. And so we just got together and took a photo with our award. It is the Governor's Community Achievement Award and our Gold Star Award from Keep Texas Beautiful. So I just want to take a few minutes to tell you a little bit about the Keep Tyler Beautiful program and what we've done in 2019 to receive those awards. Keep Tyler Beautiful is a board in the city. We have 11 board members. They are very hardworking board members. They come to all of our events. They're constantly working with our programs. We've been around since 1995, so we did celebrate 25 years this year. We weren't able to have the big celebration we wanted, but we got the word out as much as we could. Our mission is to encourage beautification, waste reduction, and recycling activities in our community. So all of our programs and projects are based on those three items in our mission. We've been a Gold Star affiliate of Keep Texas Beautiful for 14 consecutive years. We're also a Keep America Beautiful affiliate and recently a B-City USA affiliate. Next slide. The Governor's Community Achievement Award is a very prestigious award given by Keep Texas Beautiful in Tex-DoT. It comes with a $290,000 landscaping project that Tex-DoT will coordinate for us. We're in the beginning plans of figuring out what that project's going to be in our community. Next slide. So of our, in our mission, one of our big things is litter cleanup and waste reduction. Each spring, we host the Great Tyler Cleanup. We base it out of Southside Park, but we have volunteers gather in about 10 locations across the city. In 2019, we had 320 volunteers join us that day and cleaned over 6,000 pounds of litter from our streets and parks in Tyler. A big majority of our budget for the Keep Tyler Beautiful program goes towards our litter control contract with ADI. They employ people who otherwise have a hard time finding work. And we contract out 106 miles of our roadway that they clean up in two-month cycles. We're also able to call them anytime we need an emergency litter cleanup. If a citizen ever complains about a street or, you know, a trash bag falls out of a truck, we're able to call ADI and they can usually get out there that day to clean up that litter. Next slide. One of our bigger programs, the Adopt a Spot program. In 2019, we had 43 streets, 14 parks, and three campuses adopted by community groups and businesses. They volunteer and actually sign a contract to clean up those areas four times a year. It's a two-year contract. In 2019, they served 1,940 hours for that program. Of all of these litter control programs and then other miscellaneous litter cleanups that groups reach out to us for, we cleaned up 7.7 tons of litter from parks and streets in Tyler in 2019. Next slide. We have a lot of fun with our beautification projects. Our Beauty in the Box program is one of our more popular programs. You see it all around town. We currently have 72 traffic signal boxes wrapped with artwork. This is all artwork from local artists. And this program is 100% funded by sponsors. The sponsor that you see listed on the bottom of the box pays for the cost of the wrap and the artist also receives a stipend. Project Daffodil is a program that we have been running since 1995 when Keep Tyler Beautiful started. In 2019, we sold 6,000 daffodil bulbs. It serves as a fundraiser for our program. And then we also, it's a way to just beautify the community. Every spring, you'll see the daffodils pop up all over town. Next slide. In 2019, as part of the Hillside Park renovations, we got to take part in the Hillside Park Art Wall. It is a 200-foot art wall and there are 19 panels painted by local artists. They submitted their idea for the panel and the Keep Tyler Beautiful Board selected 19 pieces to go on that wall. And this project was a lot of fun. And we are currently have an open call to artists for the next round of artwork. The vision for this wall was to have a revolving wall of artwork. So every other year, we will have new artists come out and repaint those panels. Our Park Service Day program, we get volunteers together each fall. And in 2019, we had over 200 volunteers come out to Gassaway Park and we built a brand-new playground all in one day. This was a collaboration with a grant from Kaboom that we got. That was a lot of fun. Next slide. A few other beautification projects. A Beauty and Business Award. We give an award out each quarter to businesses nominated by the public. These are businesses that just take extra care in their landscaping. They have a very litter-free and clean property and they just go above and beyond. And then Parks Bathroom Murals. We've taken, started the initiative in 2019 to paint some of our parks bathrooms with some colorful, more abstract artwork. It really does help reduce the graffiti on the park bathrooms and it just brings a lot of color and artwork to our parks. Next slide. Our Tyler Gains graffiti program. We have a hotline that anybody can call to report graffiti across the city of Tyler. We do cover up that graffiti within 72 hours of receiving that report. In 2019, we cleaned up 493 tags. Next slide. And we wouldn't be able to do a lot of these programs and be so successful without these partnerships that we have in the community. We work with the Tyler Trees Committee. In 2019, we planted 1,151 trees in the city. We worked with UT Tyler on a continuous basis and TJC. They both have programs and committees within their campus. They both have Arbor Day events and they both do cleanups with us. And they both have their campus adopted through our Adopt a Street program. Next slide. Just a few other projects I wanted to highlight that we do with Keep Tyler Beautiful. We give tours of the recycle center. We are a B-City USA affiliate. We were the fourth affiliate in Texas. We celebrate Earth Day every year. We do a lot of community outreach. We set up booths at community events. We go to schools and speak. We attend Career Day. We celebrate Tyler Recycles Day each November. And we also host a youth advisory committee with about 10 students who take on their own initiatives on their campuses around town also. Next slide. And last, I just want to say thank you to our board members and all of our dedicated volunteers. In 2019, we had 2,738 volunteers and they gave over 12,000 hours. And our board members themselves gave over 400 hours to our programs and events in 2019. That is the presentation I have for y'all. Thank y'all for listening. Does anybody have any questions?
No, go ahead, I'm sorry. I don't have any questions, but I got to say, I'm amazed at everything that y'all do. And you just don't realize it until you see it all right in front of your face. But, you know, thanks for what you do. I'm excited about the new art at Hillside Park. The one thing that's really interesting is the two years that that art has been on those walls, the folks that go out and tag things and graffiti things, for some reason, they've left that art wall alone. They've actually gone and tagged the backside of the wall and have respected the art on the front. So I don't get it.
It works.
It works. So thanks for what you do.
Of course, thank you.
Angela, I'd like to say I had the privilege and honor of touring with Sherri Lee, the new premises downtown on the Square Park. I'm not sure what we're calling it yet, Convention and Visitor Center or... Visit Tyler Visitor Center. It's a wonderful space. It's so beautifully decorated and it's so nice to see how organized and convenient it is for people who are visiting Tyler. So thank you, guys, Sherri Lee and Angela both, for what you've done in that space.
All I was going to do is echo the sentiments of the mayor and councilman Sellers also too. And then also make a plea that Golden Road Park will be on that mural list the next round.
They are on the list, yeah. Well, thank y'all so much. Y'all have a great rest of the day.
Thank you. Then we have A2 with Kedrick. I tell you, this Plexiglas is weird.
It is weird.
It's like you're in a tunnel.
Mayor, Council, I want to say it's good to be here today and looking forward to working with new council and looking forward to the new year and the things that we can accomplish. And I think it's a great start, talking about some awards that we have achieved over the past year. And you have a request that City Council consider accepting this distinguished budget award presentation for our 1920 budget document. This award is given by the Government Finance Officers Association. It's a national association. And we're judged by peers in the profession that volunteer to go through our budget documents. And particularly what they look for as they go through our budget document, they judge it to see, look at your policies, your financial plans. Is it an operational guide? And last but not least, is it a communication device? And so there were approximately about 1,600 participants in the program. And I just kind of went out and Googled how many local governments there are. And the Census Bureau reports that there's about 89,000 state and local governments. So that's a small group of people that are participating in the program. And I think it says a lot about our staff to take on this. That's not necessarily required, but we do it just because that's what we would like to do. And there's a lot of hard work that goes into this document. We've got a budget analyst on staff, Blake Cathy, who works very hard with this document. And it also starts with the departments just assembling and putting together their budgets for us to review. So it is definitely a team accomplishment. I know a lot of times we brag from the finance department, but it's a team award. And so I would just recommend that City Council accept a distinguished budget award presentation for the fiscal year 1920 budget document from the Government Finance Officers Association of the United States and Canada.
Any comments for Kedrick? Kedrick, good job. How many total years have we received that award?
This is the 14th award.
14th award. Pretty impressive, thank you.
And the plaques down front for y'all to review, so.
Thank you.
All right, thank you.
Good job.
I move to approve A2.
Is that an action item?
There's no action, just be taken.
Z1 zoning item. Who's...
Well, I think they moved the rounds from the agenda that the mayor may have from our Thursday review. P1 is the next one, aye, up?
Okay. P1.
Good morning.
Good morning.
I'll do this one.
How's George?
Pleasure to be here this morning. It's kind of still looking at the various new faces on the council here and how y'all reset. So glad to be here. Again, I'm George Roberts with the Northeast Texas Public Health District. And I'm joined today by our Smith County Health Authority, Dr. Paul McGahay, who's going to have a few words for us on the vaccine. So we have a few slides and a presentation on that today. So as of yesterday, next slide. There's our dashboard from Tuesday, December 8, 2020. You'll see we have a total of 10,821 COVID-19 cases in Smith County. Of these, 6,430 are confirmed cases of COVID-19 and 4,391 are probable cases. Again, confirmed cases are those that are confirmed with a PCR test. Probable cases are those that are confirmed with an antigen test. Our recovered patient count now is 6,245, including both confirmed and probable cases. There are 249 East Texans who are in Tyler, Texas hospitals as of yesterday. We'll get a report on that shortly. We've had 204 Smith County residents who have passed away from COVID-19. And our condolences go out to the families who have lost loved ones during this time. So where are we? We're nine months into this journey. As we first announced the first three cases of COVID-19 in this room right here on Friday, March 13. So where are we now? Well, we all may be really tired of this virus, but the virus is not quite tired of us yet. That's the key point today. Over the last month, I've continuously asked that the community, stay home when you're sick, avoid large crowds and large gatherings, physical or social distance by staying six feet away from others, decrease the number of places that you go out, wear a mask out in your public, wear a mask when you're out in public and wash your hands. But we have to remember, ladies and gentlemen, this is a team sport right now. We have to, we need everyone to make an extra effort to protect members of our family, friends, and coworkers that are at risk for a tough struggle if they become infected with COVID-19. These people include our older members, our older population, and those who have comorbidities such as heart disease, hypertension, diabetes, and obesity. Also, our hospitals are filling up with COVID-19 patients right now. The hospitals have done a great job of handling this surge to date, but there is a limit. We all want the hospitals to be able to take care of those who need care. And we want you, if you get sick, or your family members, if they get sick, to be able to go to the hospital and receive that care. But again, they're filling up right now. There's a limit to what they can do. Ladies and gentlemen, there's light at the end of the tunnel here. We can see that light, it's there. But the problem is, we're still in the tunnel. So we need to continue to be mindful and don't grow weary quite yet. So please, that's my, that's my call today is really, we're in the tunnel, there's light. We can see that light, but we need to keep doing those things that we've been talking about for a period of time to make sure that we, everybody can get care when they need it. Now, to show my, to show some examples here, let me just start with our presentation here. Next slide. There we go. So this is the seven-day rolling rate. When I presented the county last week, this chart looked a bit better. But now we're seeing the, we call it the post-Thanksgiving rush. Our seven-day rolling rate is 63.89. And again, we, 63.89 is 63.89 per 100,000 have been diagnosed every day over the last seven days with COVID-19, on average. And we call substantial spread when it gets over 35. So you see that number going up. And again, hospitalizations are a lagging trend to what happens on a day-to-day basis. So that's what's concerning us right now with the hospitalizations. And again, we're, as I say, we're in the more substantial and dangerous spread of the virus. The rolling rate is among the best ways to closely monitor whether a trend over time is unfolding, whether it's increasing, decreasing, or flattening. And again, you see that as we stand right now. Next slide. This is the ZIP code rate. And you see that's, the blue level is, again, it's rates per 10,000. It's not, it's not the number of cases in a ZIP code. It's basically the rate per 10,000. Obviously, our various ZIP codes had different rates of population. So again, you see it's a, the blue level is there pretty much in Smith County, if you'll notice. You see our outlined counties, again, we work with six other counties besides Smith County. So, but you see, there's a pretty, pretty strong, it seems like it's a higher concentration going on right now in Smith County. Next slide. This is our, for our seven counties, the COVID-19 daily new cases. So again, this is the days that we actually record the cases. Look at that, we remember back in July, we had a, you know, a pretty high case count. We were concerned back then. Then it went back down in August. And then it started creeping back up in October and into November. But look at the case counts right now. Again, that's a pretty good, our seven-day rolling rate is a good way to look at this. But also, this net health, the new cases is a good way to look at it too. So you see the, pretty much an upper trend there. Next slide. This is the same information for Smith County. We've been seeing kind of some of the same type of, you know, rates here, it's going up. Next slide. This is our hospitalization. Our peak on hospitalizations was last Tuesday. We had 268 hospitalized, people in the hospital last Tuesday for COVID-19 here in Tyler. Again, yesterday it was 249. But again, you kind of see that's a higher, we were trucking along there for a while and then it's, you've had that increase there. Next slide. This is the percent hospital capacity and combined hospital data for our RAC-G. What's RAC-G? There's 19 counties in our regional area, Regional Advisory Council, G-Trauma area. There's 19 counties, basically Tyler, Smith County, Gray County, and 17 others. So why is this important? When the rates of hospitalization go above 15%, you see 14.88%. That was on Monday. When it goes over 15% for seven days or longer, we go into increased restrictions per the governor's order. The governor's order says you go from 75% capacity to 50% capacity. Last week, we were four days into that 15%. We thought actually by Saturday we would be in it. And it dropped down below 14%, below 15% for several days. Yesterday, I looked at it last night, we went to 15.02. So it's day one was yesterday of this potential restriction. So again, that's, the hospitalizations are a lagging indicator, but the governor has said that he wants to make sure that we can take care of plenty of things in our hospital. So there's your number right there. So that's the one we need to kind of pay attention to for potential increased restrictions there. Excellent. Excellent, there we go. This is the net health. This is for our, again, seven counties, COVID-19 combined racial/ethnic distribution. You see in our, again, seven counties, we don't always know the race or ethnicity of people. But for those we do know, in our seven counties, 58% are white. 16, 16.8% are African-American. 24% are Hispanic and right around 1% are other. Next slide. Smith County is a little bit different. It's a little bit less, it's less, it's 15.7 of white. The Hispanic number is a lot higher there, 30%. African-American is at 18%. And again, the other, so a little bit different here in Smith County. Higher number in Hispanic primarily. Next slide. This is our age distribution. And I think that y'all remember, for a number of, well, I gave this presentation really back in the summer as always, it's the 21 to 30 crowd. It's the 21 to 30 crowd. Look at that graph, though. The 21 to 30 crowd is still their head, but the 31 to 40, the 41 to 50, and the 51 to 60, and 11 to 20 are all catching up pretty quickly there. So that's, it's basically what that kind of shows is just good old community spread there. Next slide. And then our active cases here in Smith County, the 31 to 40 crowd is now ahead. So it's not just, we can't just lay this on the 21 to 31, 21 to 30 crowd anymore. It's really, again, it's spread throughout our community pretty well now. Next slide. This is the slide for deaths, again, seven-county area for, again, where we know the racial/ethnic mix of the person who has passed away. 63 African-American, 32 Hispanic, two Native American. Again, 169 we do not know and 276 are white. Next slide. In Smith County, deaths, 26 African-American, 13 Hispanic, 78 unknown, and 87 white. Next slide. And this is, again, the demonstration, now you heard me say earlier on that it's older people who are passing away. You kind of see this trend, looks like you, you see a little bit of bubble there. It kind of, a few people, 30 to 40 have passed away. A few more in the 41 to 50 category, but it really increases dramatically once you get over 50 there. So I mean, again, you see the 55, 60, 70, 80s, 90s. So it's a dramatic increase in that number there. And with that, I'm going to ask Dr. McGahay to come up and share with you some information on the vaccine. Dr. McGahay?
Thank you, Mr. Roberts. Good morning, Mayor, Council. Glad to be here. Thank you for the invitation. Yes, there is light at the end of the tunnel. The vaccine we've been talking about for several months is on the verge of arriving in Tyler, Texas, and other parts of Texas too. It's really an unprecedented scientific achievement when you put it in perspective, how we discovered the vaccine earlier this year. We've gone from isolating it to developing it in the lab and mass-producing millions of doses of what appears to be a very effective vaccine. We know there'll be a lot of questions about it moving forward, but hopefully, we can answer some of those as we go through. The slide in front of you shows the four vaccines that are emerging to the top of release. The first two, the Pfizer vaccine, will be reviewed by the FDA tomorrow. And if it's, and I'll have another slide that talks about that process. But if it's approved, which it's anticipated it will be, it will go to a committee at CDC and then it can be released for administration shortly thereafter. The Moderna vaccine will go before FDA on December 17, about a week later, exactly a week later. And it will go through the same process. You'll notice that these first two vaccines require two doses. The Pfizer vaccine, the day of the initial vaccination, we call day zero. And then 21 days later, the Moderna vaccine, day zero, 28 days later. The AstraZeneca vaccine is on the heels of those two. Good data on their clinical trials. And then the Janssen vaccine, or the Johnson &amp; Johnson vaccine, is also in the mix. You'll notice in the far right column, there's one dose required for that. So that's kind of an exciting possibility there. Next slide, please. This is what's happening right now, tomorrow, actually, for the Pfizer vaccine. The same is happening for the Moderna vaccine. But tomorrow, this VRBAC, that's a Vaccine Advisory Committee to FDA, will be presenting their scientific findings to the FDA. A lot of leading scientists from across the country are on that. It's anticipated that FDA will review all that data and positively receive it and authorize an emergency use authorization. That's called an EUA. That's a step that, based on the fact that we're in a pandemic situation, the president has declared a public health emergency. They can utilize this EUA to fast-track medications or vaccines and make them available to the public. Then, as the arrow shows, the CDC Advisory Committee on Immunization Practices, ACIP, will call an immediate meeting, it could be Friday, it could be Saturday, and make their recommendations. If they are affirmative, then vaccine can begin. And actually, after the FDA gives, after the FDA approves that emergency use authorization, vaccine will be shipped from Pfizer directly to all parts of the country, including Tyler and many parts of Texas. Who will be receiving it in the first wave? And that's on the next slide. There we go. CDC has given overarching recommendations for who should receive the vaccine initially. The Department of State Health Services in Texas is refining that list for who should receive it initially in Texas. These, they're rolling it out in phases. They're trying to match the priority populations with the amount of vaccine that we have and distribute those out to these needy populations based on their risk, their exposure to patients with COVID-19, and the things they're doing. And you can see it's a logical list. There's a first tier will be hospital staff who work directly with patients with COVID, physicians, nurses, additional clinical staff. We know that long-term care facilities haven't been impacted greatly, so long-term care staff who work directly with vulnerable patients. EMS providers who engage in transport of COVID patients are on that list. Home healthcare workers, including hospice care workers. And a new addition was residents of long-term care facilities. So that was added by CDC about a week ago. They are at high risk, so that group has also been added most recently. There's tier two for Phase 1A on the next slide. There's tier two for Phase 1A on the next slide. These are, these are the other six of the 11 initial priority groups, staff in outpatient care offices like clinicians, doctors, nurses, RTs, respiratory therapists, clinical staff and labs, non-911 transport patients, direct care staff in freestanding emergency clinics, community pharmacy staff who are involved in, in vaccinating the community, public health staff that work for Mr. Roberts and others who are directly involved with administration. They call it last responders here, people who work in funeral homes, et cetera, and then school nurses are also on the list. So those are the 11 initial priority groups for this initial allocation of vaccine, which will be coming, we feel, in the very near future. I think that's my last slide, is it my last slide? It is my last slide. But, again, it's up to Mr. Roberts, up to many of us, to, to inform the public that it's coming. I was texted by my nephew this morning, he's a physician's assistant, should I get the vaccine? You know, I said, yes, I said, I would recommend that, I plan on receiving it when my time comes. I'm not a frontline worker taking care of COVID patients, but I do anticipate getting it. You'll have a lot of questions, we'll have a lot of questions, it's a discussion we'll need to have with our family members. We hope to disseminate a lot of information that can clarify some of the, the issues around that. The safety profile is good, it's a short profile, it hasn't been outlawed, but the safety profiles look good. The efficacy rates for the vaccine look very good, even after one dose, Pfizer came out with information after one dose, I believe, yesterday, the effectiveness was good too. So we're excited about possibilities, and we'll keep you very informed about that process. George, I'll turn it back to you.
Dr. McGahay?
Yes?
The, I read yesterday, like, the two, two hospitals were getting like 925 doses, and UT Health was getting like 30 something hundred doses. So, so when will the vaccines come in larger numbers?
That's an excellent question. I, I think the first wave is coming out to healthcare facilities. We had an ultra cold freezer, which we could have more capacity at our facility. Week by week, DSHS will be deciding how much more should go throughout the state, and that's that, expert vaccination advisory panel, which I am pleased to be on, and fortunate to be on, will be making those decisions, how much goes where, how much vaccine we have, the needy populations matching those up. So, about 40 to 60 million doses of the Pfizer and the Moderna vaccine have been produced, so there's a lot more will be coming. So, week by week, we'll just have to, to match those up and, and share that with people, and, and try to get those priority groups vaccinated. I think it may be March or April before it's just open to everyone, and comes to clinicians' offices, et cetera, but that's kind of an incremental timeline. More will be coming, this is the first wave, this, this, this week or next.
Dr. McGahay?
Yes?
Do you think the, the first 11 stages all make sense to me? Do you think the future rounds are going to be targeted towards the at-risk category?
Absolutely. There's Phase 1A, which I showed you, Phase 1B is high-risk populations, and, and, you know, over 65 with diabetes, heart disease, et cetera, and then there's a Phase 1C, everyone like over 65. So, I can, we can, we can share that information with you, yeah.
And Dr. Kavva, a question?
Yes?
The buzz in the business world now is, can employers require employees to take the vaccination in order to come to the office every day?
It's my understanding that when a vaccine is released under emergency use authorization, it cannot be mandated for anyone. We've been told that a couple of times by our DSHS counterparts. Now, there is some debate over that. If we're not, I don't think any hospital system is mandating it at this time. They do for flu vaccine, but I don't think under EUA, we can, we can do that, but that will be a discussion once it receives full licensure that we'll need to have.
Dr. McGahay and Mr. Roberts, thank you so much for the update. I have one question, and I'm glad to see this finally coming our way. Do you know how many people participated in this double-blind study? Have some idea on that?
For each, for each vaccine, there were about 60,000 in the Pfizer group, I believe. I can get you the exact numbers, and one of the, and I think Moderna, there were about 45,000.
Twenty, I mean, 25?
Forty-five. There were thousands, there were thousands involved in those, and, and what Pfizer did is, they gave half the group the vaccine, half the group saline, you know, and then they, they, they ran the numbers, but tens of thousands of people participated in those.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
So I'll do a few other comments here, then we'll go for, for more Q and A if you, if you have other questions. Well, with contact tracing, we continue our efforts with contact tracing, and it's important that people understand what actions they need, may need to take if they're COVID-19 positive, and also alert their contacts. The community at large now has a better understanding of what contact tracing is. Again, nine minutes ago in this room, I think Mr. Bressard remembered the whole concept of contact tracing. We, none of us quite understood exactly what that meant, but now I think we are all very schooled on what the idea of contact tracing really is. Our staff has worked with area businesses, manufacturers, schools, and government entities to train appropriate staff on how to do contact tracing in their own facilities. We have staff dedicated to contact tracing, but we've also had assistance from the Texas Workforce Commission, Smith County Medical Society, UT School of Pharmacy, the City of Tyler, Fire Department, Police Department have also helped us with contact tracing. So again, it's an essential piece of our, this effort to talk to people, to encourage them to self-isolate and not spread the virus. Testing-wise, local providers, you know, early on, local providers were, everybody was screwing to find testing options. Providers do have testing options, most providers ask that you have a symptom, though, if you have, but there are, there are places you can go if you have no symptoms and just want to know. Texas Farm Emergency Management has the, have a center over at the Tyler Senior Center, it's open 9 to 4, Monday through Friday, so please, if you're interested yourself, or encourage people to go over there and get tested. Understand CVS Pharmacy has, has options as well. So, please, if you want to test, there are options in the community to go do that. If you're, if the community is interested, go to Net Health, Net Health, www.nethealthcovid19.org. We have those listed out on our site as well. Again, St. Louis Baptist Church did a great job for us back in October hosting this free testing, we're very grateful to them, and Reverend Carraway has expressed interest in doing that once more, so we'll, we'll be in contact with him. Hospitals, again, we, I told you the hospital number a few minutes ago, we remain in contact with our local hospitals routinely, I visit with them, obviously Dr. McGahay works with one of the health systems, our EOC meets with the, we have them on a call, we actually visited with them last Thursday to get an update from them. We get a dashboard every day, that shows the number, the, the hospitalizations, the number of beds that are actually in use, not just COVID-19, but everything, ventilators, isolation rooms, PPE supplies. So, at the moment, again, the hospitals are very busy, very, very busy, but they're working hard to, to surge so they can take care of those who need it. Schools, quick update on that, they started August 17th, and I think my, my summary point here is that the schools have done a great job in our community. I think that they have really owned this whole situation, and I think we were all concerned that there would be quite a number of cases resulting from schools opening, and while there have been cases between staff and students, it is, it is, all the schools have just done a fabulous job. So hats off to the schools, the community, the, the teachers that have done a great job with that. Finally, again, I, I, I thank the City of Tyler, you Mayor Warren, you jumped into, jumped into the fray now, so we're glad to have you as part of EOC. We appreciate you, we appreciated Mayor Heinz jumping in before that, Mr. Bressard, Tyler Fire Chief David Kobel, Fire Captain Hal Walker, Police Chief Jimmy Toler, Ms. Julie Goodgame, who have spent endless hours in emergency operations center meetings, along with added phone calls, texts, emails, and again, there's been numerous city employees in the Fire and Police Department that have helped in this response as well. And finally, hats off to my staff at Net Health, who have worked tirelessly during this entire effort. They've, they've come to work, I have peers around the state and the country whose staff have maybe have worked from home. My staff has gone out, they've seen people, they've taken care of people, be it a WIC program, immunization, so my staff is, has come to work and taken care of folks, so they've been out there in the, in the line of fire every day, and so we, I'm very grateful for the staff at Net Health for the extra effort they've put in during this time. Questions?
One more question to Mr. Mayor. Dr. McGahay, do you know the age that was involved in the study?
Yes. Primarily individuals 18 or older, the vaccine will be for individuals 18 or older. The Pfizer vaccine, interestingly, is approved down to the age of 12, but to start out with, it will be administered to those 18 and above.
Thank you.
I've got two questions for Mr. Roberts. Mr. Roberts, you had mentioned the PPP availability, respirators, and so on, so do our hospitals, emergency care facilities, do they have adequate PPE?
At this point, we get the, on the daily dashboard, I see that, we asked them about that. Once we, once some supplies started to come available, again, that was a real challenge early on, March and really April, but once the supplies started coming in, the, our rack has done a great job of getting this, make sure our hospitals are supplied, our nursing homes, first responders, so as of this moment right now, I think they've had a few situations with gloves along the way, it's been, there's one, be one or two items that they've had issues with, but overall, the, the supply of PPE is, is, is good right now.
Okay, good, thank you. And then the mortality data. I'm curious, when you had mentioned in a previous presentation to Council, that the FAST test, the quick test, actually had, it was being counted, if somebody had gotten a negative result, that it was actually being counted as a positive? Is that?
No, 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 the, the antigen test?
Yeah.
If it is a, if it's a positive test, we count it, and the reason is, is that the studies have shown that if it's, if that antigen test clicks positive, it's 94, latest number I heard, 94% reliable. The issue with the antigen test is, if it's a negative, if it comes back negative, they have to go run a PCR on it a lot of times to see if it actually is a positive test. So that, if it comes back, because if it hits positive, it's pretty reliable. If it hits negative, it's not as reliable.
Well, thank you for clarifying that.
Sure.
Because that leads me right back to my mortality data question. I was concerned, and I've heard, I want to make sure that you squash the rumor mill quickly, that deaths reported in the hospitals, any death, is also classified as a COVID death, if, if it's questionable at all. Is that true?
If it has COVID-19, if they, if they've tested positive for COVID-19, it would, it would be categorized as a COVID-19 death.
So they have to test positive for COVID?
Yeah, right.
Okay, and then it's?
Right.
Classified that way?
And the way we count tests, Mr. Westbrook, is, is that we don't, we don't, if it's a CT test or a doctor's evaluation, we only count it if it's a case of positive PCR confirmed test or positive PCR, so it has to be a laboratory test to say that it is a positive test.
Thank you for clarifying both of those points. Thank you for all you do.
Yes, sir.
Were you able to find out anything on the PCR cycle count?
Yeah, Dr. McGahay, Dr. McGahay has a, has a response to you on that.
Okay.
That's a good question. The cycle time is part of the process for the polymerase chain reaction of the PCR test, which is sort of the standard test we're using, and it's a complicated question. I'll, I'll answer it shortly, and then be happy to talk with you in the future about it, but cycle time, the, the PCR test measures the viral RNA in the sample, only in the sample, not in the individual, so it's either there, it's not there, and what it, what through the PCR, what the PCR does, it amplifies or causes replication, and it, you know, two turn to four, four turn to eight, and it's just a multi, exponentially amplifies until you have billions of virus particles at the end of the process. But there's the cycle, first cycle, second cycle, third cycle, and I think a question that has, you know, been asked is, what, where do you, what's the cutoff for that cycle time? Traditionally, I think, in our lab, and the CDC has recommended that 37 cycles is the cutoff, but, you know, the earlier you detect the virus and it hits above a threshold value, the, the more that is in that sample. So there is some confusion over that, I, I think most labs use that 37th cycle, but I, I've seen, George forwarded me the articles, they posed some very interesting and good questions. I think the bottom line for that is, if it's, if it's positive, you have to correlate that with the patient's symptoms, that's not, and how sick are they? Are they not sick, are they not sick? And look at the whole context of that moment, because that's a point in time when you obtain that test, that's just that moment, and five days later, it could change. So, that's a good question, that's kind of the top-level answer, and, you know, I'd be happy to...
I probably couldn't understand more.
Anyway.
One, one more question, and this is just my chance to get some free medical advice. Is, is it asymptomatic person who tests positive PCR test? Can they, can they spread?
Yes, they can, most definitely, yeah, they can, and that's, that's who we worry about, because they're spreading it and we don't know, that's why we conduct all these social distancing guidelines, because some people have it, they can spread it, but they don't know it. Yeah, for sure. Okay, thank you.
Any other questions?
Any other questions? You know, the only other thing I'll say is, and I know everybody up here and out there experiences it, we're seeing this stuff everywhere, and, you know, in the past, it was just a friend of a friend, but now it's really gotten to where it's people we know, that, that names are associated with, with the, the virus, and as a matter of fact, the guy that sits, or used to sit behind me in church, had been there in March, died yesterday after 21 years, or 21 month, 21 days on the ventilator. And you just think, these are people that, that have a name, and, and where I'm going with this is, you know, if, if we go seven straight days, over 15% in the hospital, and have to cut back, that also means we've got to go seven straight days in the future, below 15% to go back to 75%.
Correct.
So unless we all buckle down and, and stop this spread, I mean, we're just going to go back to 50%. Our restaurants and, and places we go shop, it's, it's just, to me, it's just gotten more serious.
I, I, you're absolutely correct, and that's why, you know, I kind of say, this is a, it's a team sport now. It's going to take, all, all of us have to pull together, because it's, we've, we've got to, we got, we got to work together to make this thing, because we, we don't want to see our, our, our community, our, our businesses have to cut back, you know, that impacts, that impacts our economy. So, take those steps right now, and also, you know, also remember too, like, again, the hospital thing is, the hospitals have done an amazing job of flexing and surging, but like anything else, you can, kind of like this room right here, you can put so many people in here, even, you know, before COVID, we all could cram in here, you can only get, but you can only get so many people in here. The hospitals can only have so many people before they just, it's, it's, they're, they're full, and we want to make sure that, you know, any of us in this room, our families, et cetera, if they, if they do have this, that they can get the hospital and they have a bed. So, it's really, it's, it's on us now to basically to play the, play the team sport and work together to make this thing, make this thing happen, so thank you. And, again, finally, thank you all for allowing Dr. McGahay and to come, both to come and talk to you all this morning and give you an update. It's very helpful, and I think it's helpful to the community. Thank you very much.
Thank you both. Thank you both. V2, Tiffany?
Good morning. I am Tiffany Curry with Tyler Water Utilities, and we are looking forward to updating you on the consent decree work that's been done this year. Jim Forbes with Pipeline Analysis is here to give the presentation. He has worked with the city in supporting us and putting together a consent decree program since 2013. So I will hand it over to Jim Forbes to walk through the presentation.
Thank you, Tiffany. It's an interesting presentation on COVID, and as a member of Water Environment Federation, I'll let you know that the Water Environment Federation is testing multiple cities for COVID in the wastewater, and they think either this pandemic or the future pandemic, tracing it through the wastewater may help identify areas that are hot, where they can go in there and, and pursue corrective action. But I, I digress. Today, Mayor, Council, going to talk about the consent decree. This morning, I want to update you on the status of the wastewater collection system consent decree. Go back a couple. Yeah, there we go. The City of Tyler is placed under a consent decree for unpermitted discharges, which is wastewater leaving your system before it goes through the treatment plant. These untreated overflows of wastewater from the collection system are a violation of the Clean Water Act, that's been around since 1975. As a result of several years of negotiation with TCEQ and EPA, the City of Tyler entered into a consent decree, and that agreement went into effect April 10th of 2017. So, starting on April 10th, 2017, you are under the consent decree, and I will be updating you today on the current and future work to comply with, with that order. Next slide. As you see from this slide, there's various engineers have been assessing, evaluating, designing the least cost solutions to comply with the phased work required under the consent decree. Multiple contractors with varying levels of specialization have been performing system repairs and rehabilitation since 2017. Construction methods include pipe bursting, and you'll hear a lot about pipe bursting here in Tyler, because it's a very effective method for repairing lines. It really came from the oil field back in the 60s. If you can picture... If you can picture a drilling rig horizontal that goes through the pipe, and breaks open the pipe as it goes, and pulls in a larger pipe behind it, that's plastic. That's what we're, there's a lot of that going on here in Tyler, and it's very effective in, in making those type of repairs. We have a small pipe that needs to be bigger anyway, we can just pull in a bigger pipe, there's no disruption to the street above, there's minimum disruption to the residents, so it's a very effective, fairly popular method for repairs. Another method is cured-in-place liner. One of the bigger contracts that's about to come up in group three work is cured-in-place. Cured-in-place is, we take a piece of felt, we impregnate it with resin, we pull it through the line, and then we inflate it, and then it sets up by heat or hot water, and it becomes basically a fiberglass pipe within the pipe. And by doing this, we restore the structural integrity of the pipe, and we extend the life of those assets another fifty, seventy-five hundred years. Next slide. Since, since April tenth, twenty seventeen, there's been many reports summarized here. Each of those checks represents a report that had to be submitted as a result of EPA's consent decree. Reports have been prepared and submitted, and submitted in accordance with the consent decree, and all these reports are required, and we've met every due date in the consent decree. The consent decree requires that every manhole in your system must be inspected within the first five years. It also requires that every pipe in your system has to be cleaned with hydraulic cleaning, and it needs to be closed-circuit televised inspection of each of those lines in seven years. The latest report submitted to TCEQ and EPA in October was the Capacity Assessment Report. This is really the final puzzle that we needed to really establish what the overall cost of this consent decree is going to be, and I'll be talking about that in a little more detail later. Next slide. The consent decree includes all your pipes and manholes in your collection system. In April of twenty seventeen, based on your GIS drawings, there were six hundred and fifty-five miles of pipe in your system. Right now, we found six hundred and seventy-eight miles. We're finding more pipe, we're finding more manholes, it just weren't documented. The maps, and I must commend Holly Well with, in your GIS department, for taking what was really marginal maps, and now we have a very accurate database of your assets as we're inspecting them, and much more accurate maps of the collection system. And you really can't manage if you can't find it. So we're out there updating those maps daily, and she's updating those GIS maps within a day or two of that. So you have three and a half million feet of pipe, ten thousand manholes, which are now eleven thousand manholes-
Wow.
...and twenty-four lift stations. Next. And one more. If you were to stretch, nope, too many, go back one. Thank you. If you were to stretch these pipes end to end, they would, they would go from Tyler, Texas to Atlanta, Georgia. And, much of that pipe is vitrified clay pipe, it's, it's clay tile. If you were to pick it up and drop it, it would shatter. And unfortunately, the soils here in Tyler aren't sometimes the best. So if the, if it wasn't put in with good bedding, and the pipe moves around, it tends to break and crack, and when it comes to clay tile pipe, it's either in really good shape, like it was put in yesterday, or it's in really bad shape, where it crushes and breaks, and you'll click one more time. A lot of times, you end up with, let's see, with pipes where the roots find their way in, and it plugs the line, this is what can cause those unpermitted discharges. The flow can't get through the roots, so it comes up out of the manhole, and that's an unpermitted discharge. So, those are the type of things that we see here. The, the other thing is, about forty-three percent of your system is six-inch pipe and smaller. That's a large percentage of very small pipe, and that's something where pipe bursting really will help us in, in reducing the cost, as opposed to going in there and open cutting and replacing the lines, we go in there and pipe burst it into an eight, or we could go even to a ten-inch line if, if need be. Next slide. The consent decree has a specific court-ordered schedule that must be maintained to prevent stipulated penalties and fines. Keep in mind that a change to the consent decree would require going back to the court and asking the judge for a change. So it's pretty much locked in stone. It's very rare that you get a judge that will, will change a consent decree. To date, all work is on or ahead of schedule, thanks to the team of engineers, contractors, and city staff supporting these multiple efforts. And we have efforts going on, from the design, construction, inspection, going on pretty much all over the city right now. Next slide. As I mentioned, you have three and a half million feet of pipe in your system, end to end, Atlanta to Tyler. To put it in perspective, we are about eighty-five percent complete with the manhole inspections. If it was Councilman Curtis's job to inspect these manholes, first thing to do is go out there, and let's say it's in the middle of the street, you'd have to put up all of his cones around there, have to have the safety in, in place, open up the manhole, do the inspection, measure all the different depths of the manhole and the pipes, photograph defects, photograph the pipes coming in and out, make sure the map is correct, and if not, we'll have to update the map. Once you finish that, you can walk or drive four hundred feet to the next manhole, but that next manhole may be in somebody's backyard. So now you're going to knock on the door, you're going to have to get access to that backyard, so you can open the manhole and do the inspection. Plan on doing that for eleven thousand manholes. And to date, we're at nine thousand four hundred and thirty-three manholes, so we're getting closer to completing those eleven thousand manholes. As of today, if we were in Tyler, we'd be in Pale City, Alabama. That's, that's how far we walked and inspected the, these lines. The other thing the consent decree requires is the TV inspection of these pipes, which means putting a closed-circuit TV in the line, cleaning it, and making a video of, of the pipe, so we can assess its condition, determine the best repair method. That has to be completed in seven years. Currently, we're at three hundred and thirteen miles, or we've made it all the way to just outside Jackson, Mississippi. So it gives you an idea of the magnitude of, of what this undertaking involves. The current work, ongoing work includes Group One, Basin Eight and Fifteen Assessment, Rehabilitation. Construction is nearing completion on this ten-point-eight-million-dollar project. It includes rehabilitation of a thousand fifty manholes and a hundred and forty-one thousand feet of mainline. We refer to drainage basin numbers for ongoing work, so we're talking about Basin Eight and Fifteen, and that represents the pipes and manholes within that drainage area. We prioritize the basins based on flow monitoring that was done early in the program, so we're approaching the city based on the worst first, and as we get more into the system, we should get into lines that should cost less to repair. The, I'm going to go ahead and continue on. Group Two work is well underway with completion next year. The Group Two includes manhole repairs to Basins Eight and Fifteen, and TV inspection of Basin Thirteen. And Basin Thirteen, to give you an idea, if you can go up one slide. Go up.
Oh, you mean go back?
Oh, you can't go back? Oh, okay.
It should say, what, Group Two at the top?
It should say, uh, Group, Group Two. Well, Group Two includes Basin Thirteen, which is the courthouse area, there we go, which includes the courthouse area, Tyler Junior College, it kind of divides Broadway and, and East Front Street. Estimated cost for Group Two is six-point-one million dollars in rehabilitation. Next slide, Group Three. It's the largest package to date. It includes about fifteen hundred manhole inspections and rehabilitation, sixty-eight-thousand-four-hundred linear feet of pipelines that are going to be rehabilitated, much of it with cured-in-place liner, using that impregnated felt to rehabilitate those lines. Much of this work is large dam or pipe. These are in the, along the creek bottoms, they're in, out through the woods, they're very limited access, that's where the right-of-way clearing program has been critical, so we can get equipment in there to make the repairs and rehabilitation. Estimated cost for Group Three is forty-four-point-five million dollars. Next slide. Ongoing work, currently, the hydraulic model, which, of the wastewater collection system, identified areas of very high wet weather inflow. That's rainwater that's finding its way into the sanitary sewer, and we don't want it in there. It, it robs us of capacity, it, it makes us exceed capacity, and causes some of the overflows that we're seeing. The private lateral program was a method to reduce the cost of upsizing pipes by removing the stormwater from entering the system. So one of the options we looked at was, let's get this water out of the system, so we don't have to make these great big pipes. The plan is to address the private sewer laterals that run from the house to the street. We're already evaluating all your mainline sewers. That's the lines from, from Tyler to Atlanta, but at the private laterals from the street to the house, you could almost start in Atlanta and start working backwards to, to Tyler. That's how much private laterals are out there. So it's a big source of, of water that's getting into the system. The plan is based on reducing the wet weather inflow by a conservative thirty-five percent, with hopes that we're going to get at least fifty percent removal. So we're being very conservative on what we're looking at for private sector removal at thirty-five percent, and the model says, if we can get thirty-five percent out, we're going to be in really good shape, so we're going to shoot for fifty percent.
Before you move forward, Mr. Forbes-
Sure.
-is that included in the consent decree, that we have to hit that thirty-five percent number?
No, it, no, it is not.
Okay.
It is not.
And the thirty-five percent is the private lateral only, or?
It's the private lateral only, because we're addressing the, the public side, all the mainlines and manholes separately.
And how do you do that?
We'll be smoke testing, and you'll be hearing about the private lateral program, which Adams Engineers is, is going to champion. We'll be smoke testing, and the smoke goes up those laterals, and if there's a break in the lateral, it's going to come out.
Yeah.
We're going to find a lot of clean-out caps that are missing, we'll be putting new clean-out caps where they're, where they're gone. That six-dollar item may be causing a lot of water from the yard to drain into the sewer.
Sure.
You will recall that the private lateral ordinance went by the council back in August, so you've already been looking at this, and that was an important item to have in place before we started this private, private sector program. Right-of-way clearing continues to gain access for manholes and pipelines and woods and, and along creeks. If we can't get the repair equipment to the manhole, then we really can't repair it. So, over the last, since twenty seventeen, the right-of-way clearing has been ongoing. It'll always be an ongoing issue here. Once we clear it, we need to seed it, then it's a matter of mowing those rightaways instead of chopping down trees and, and the expense of clearing all that each, each several years. The creek crossing assessments and prioritization for repairs is ongoing. Creek crossing repairs are transitioning from emergency repairs to more scheduled, planned repairs. Before they were, we were kind of reactive. We have a creek crossing that's failed, we need to go out there and make emergency repair. Those, all the creek crossings are being evaluated, they're being prioritized, so we can put together a better, I guess, method of, of being reactive, instead of just reacting to these overflow, of these creek crossing problems, is, is having them planned, and planned repairs. The forced main and air relief valve inspections and repairs is nearing implementation. I believe Tiffany will be talking to you later today on that, the contract to perform that air relief valve inspection and, and repairs. Next slide. The, the latest submittal that we made to EPA was the Capacity Assessment and Remedial Measures Plan. We described the many ongoing construction projects around the city, well, this program is going to even increase it more. The consent decree required preparation of the Capacity Assessment and Remedial Measures Plan, and that was delivered to EPA this last October. The plan included a hydraulic model of the entire wastewater collection system. We projected the growth in the city to the year twenty thirty-five to determine its impact on pipe sizes. We field verified each of the model predicted problems. So if the model says, you're going to have a problem here, we went out in the field and, surveyed that to make sure the slopes are correct in the model. Some of these projects, as a result, fell, fell through. They really weren't a problem, because the data from the GIS database may have not been updated recently. There may have been new pipes put in that weren't shown. So some of these projects fell through, thank goodness, and what's left are those projects where we need bigger capacity. The existing system, based on future growth, based on what we anticipate for wet weather infiltration inflow in the future, just isn't adequate, so it's got to be upsized. One other finding from the model is it identified the wastewater treatment plants as a potential issue for capacity. I think it's important to note that the wastewater treatment plants are not part of the consent decree. EPA, through negotiations, we kept it out of the consent decree. It's bad enough dealing with your collection system, but the treatment plants are not. However, the model is showing us that with all the flows that we project, both now and into the future, the twenty, thirty-five projections, treatment plants are going to have a problem handling the flows. And it's, we recommend that you start looking at planning to look at the treatment plants, basically a master plan for the treatment plants, and where they're going to be located, what, how much flow they need to be now and in the future. Next slide. As of today, the system-wide cost for consent decree compliance is for condition remedial measure costs. This is where all the testing and, and evaluation and TV-ing of all the pipes and manholes from here to Atlanta, we're estimating at a hundred and three million dollars. Hundred and eighty-three million dollars is based on what the current costs are running, and projecting what the, those assets that haven't been inspected yet may cost to repair. So we're using our history to project what we think the, the total cost of the project would be. We have six million dollars in there to reduce stormwater, that's that private sector thirty-five percent reduction program. We, we anticipate that could reach up around six billion dollars. But it's a very important factor, because it keeps us from having to build a lot bigger pipes. Then we have thirty-three million for increasing pipe sizes due to inadequate pipe capacity. That's this hydraulic model, the capacity assessment, it comes back with these projects, specific projects that need to go forward to increase the capacity. The total consent decree cost, back in twenty seventeen, we estimated two hundred and fifty million dollars. Currently, we're at about two hundred and twenty-two million dollars. And if we compare Tyler with other cities that are under consent decree, there's only really four cities in Texas under consent decree. Corpus Christi, they're about twice the size of you, but they're estimating their consent decree is going to cost them about eight hundred and ten million dollars. San Antonio, one-point-two billion, Houston, two billion. And those are under consent decree, but there's a lot of cities that are under administrative order. It's not as severe as a consent decree, but administrative order is still EPA's watching you, and you've got a plan, and you better implement the plan. So there's a lot of cities that are under some kind of regulatory action. Next slide. The next steps is to continue the condition assessment of the remaining portions of the collection system. We need to finish all six hundred and seventy-eight miles of sewer. We need to continue the repairs of manholes and mainline sewers. We need to start the private sector repair program, which is geared to start really early next year. We need to initiate the hydraulic model recommendations. The city staff has started the process to design and construct for upsizing sewers and evaluation of the wastewater treatment plants. I think that's going to be some future contracts coming your way for design and, and planning on the part of the, the treatment plants. You will be, you'll be hearing the term wastewater treatment plant master plan in the future. Some of the questions that would come up for that would be, does the south side plant need to be bigger where it's at, or does it need to be moved somewhere else, further downstream, to cover a bigger area, more regional-type plant? So those are the type of questions that the master plan would address. Just remember, the south side plant was built in, in nineteen fifty-five, the west side plant was built in nineteen sixty-eight. If these were- If these were automobiles, they would be considered antiques. And it's, it's, they pretty much run their useful life. There's been additions, there've been modifications to it, but it's time to really take a close look at, at where those plants are today and where they need to be in the future. Finally, there's the, the metric that is the most important metric that EPA looks at and that's the number of SSOs, sanitary sewer overflows that occur each year. That's what got you where you're at with the consent decree. Your reporting, and every, every city is self-reporting, so EPA has your own data and they'll use that against you. So, the number of S, sanitary sewer overflows in 2017, when we started the consent decree, was at a hundred and two. Currently, as of today, you're at seventy-four. We're seeing about a thirty percent reduction over those since 2017 of your SSO. So, we're headed in the right direction. That metric is very important. If it was going the other direction, we'd have to be looking at, okay, what can we do different? But the metric looks good. EPA will be pleased. We're not where we need to be yet. The key comparison that EPA looks at is the number of SSOs per hundred miles. And if you're above five, that's where EPA will start looking at you. Currently, if you make the calculation, we're at about ten per hundred miles. So, we've got a ways to go, but we know we do. Those cities that are below five, generally EPA will, they may send a little nasty gram to you and say, you know, you have too many overflows, y'all do something about it. But we're a magnitude above that right now. And we were three magnitudes above it when we started this program. So, we're making the right, we're, we're making the right approach. We're, the, the trend is downward. With that, I'd be glad to answer any questions you have on where we're at on the consent decree.
What was the SSO, you just said SSOs per how many miles?
Per hundred miles.
Hundred miles.
So.
I had a quick question too.
Certainly.
Sorry. I visited in District One with one of your teams on the sewer assessment. How many teams are working in the city right now?
Oh, gosh. If you look at that graphic that shows all the different contractors, I would say, what, maybe twenty?
Twenty.
Twenty different contractors and engineers, various entities are working on this project.
Any other questions for Jim?
How many manholes have y'all had to knock on doors and let residents know? You have a manhole backyard buried that they didn't know were there.
It, it's not as many as you would think. It, it probably runs around ten percent. And a lot of times, oh, yeah, we know where it's at, it's right back there in the corner or it's underneath my son's sandbox. So, a lot of times, nobody's home or they don't answer. So, we'll leave a door hanger on there and ask them to call us so we can arrange to get in there. And based on the maps that haven't been verified, we may go back there and not find it. It's actually over the fence in the next person's backyard. So, we start that whole process again to try to locate it.
And then when you do the smoke test, if residential has one of the covers on their cleanout caps for overflow, will that stop the smoke or will the smoke go through?
It'll stop it.
Okay.
It, it should stop it. If it's on there tight and secure, no smokes will come up through there. Now, what will happen, and of course, we have notified, we notify the resident by a door hanger before we smoke test, is if you have faulty plumbing in your house, smoke's going to get in your house. Those little P-traps underneath your sink, those should be full of water. If you have a sink that's not used and that dries out, just like sewer gas could come up through your house, so will the smoke. So, in the little flyer that we leave with each resident, we recommend if you have seldom used sinks, to pour a gallon of water down it just to make sure that little trap is full of water. And we notify the fire department every day of where we're at.
Any other questions? Jim, thank you for the presentation.
I appreciate it. Thank you very much.
Thank you all. And now we move into zoning. Z one with Heather.
Good morning, Mayor and Council.
Good morning.
Our first item is for a request to allow for the construction of a townhome development. To the north is zoned R-one A and is a single family and is the location of a church. To the west is R-two, two-family and PU-R Plan Unit Residential as well as R-one A and it contains duplexes and undeveloped land as well as, yeah. So, to the east is zoned for multifamily and is the location of apartments. And to the south is Plan Unit Residential. This request would amend the Future Land Use Guide from multifamily to townhouse garden apartment. The applicant is requesting for these townhouse units. The proposed zoning allows for a maximum of ten dwelling units per acre. With single-family homes to the west and multifamily to the east, the proposed zoning change would serve as a transition in this area. Of the sixteen notices mailed, zero returned in favor or in opposition and the Planning and Zoning Commission by a six-zero vote recommends approval.
Any questions of Heather? Move to approve Z one.
Second.
Any further discussion? Cassandra, has anybody called in on this item?
I don't know. There's a girl, Z two.
Okay. Okay. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you.
The next item is a zone change from multifamily to office and the applicant is requesting this in order to come into conformance with the current code. In this area, it is zoned R-two, two-family and is undeveloped. And to the east and west is multifamily and is a mixture of residential and undeveloped land. And to the south is two-family and, and multifamily and is the location of single-family and multifamily uses. This request would amend the Future Land Use Guide from multifamily to office. And you can see that the green is the subject property. This property was built in nineteen eighty-five and has been used for professional office uses since then. And at the time, the R-three zoning district allowed four offices and since the, that time of construction, the property has, or the zoning has disallowed that type of use for that district. And so, this request would bring it into conformance. Of the nine notices mailed, one was returned in favor, zero in opposition, and the Planning and Zoning Commission by six-zero vote recommends approval.
Any questions of Heather? Cassandra, did you say someone called in on this one?
On Z two. She come by and you have questions.
Just for questions?
Yes.
Okay. Anybody have any questions? Move to approve Z two. Who made the motion?
James.
James. Motion by James, second by McGee. Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. You know, this Plexiglas makes it hard to hear who's making the motions.
That's right.
Plus, I'm half-dead. Go ahead.
This is a request to change the zoning to allow for a single-family home. To the north, east and west are zoned M-one but contain single-family homes and to the south is single-family and M-one industrial and is undeveloped. This is consistent with the Future Land Use Guide, which identifies this as single-family. The property is in a largely utilized, uh, single-family home area and this request would also help accomplish the Tyler first goal to add three thousand more households to the north end. Of the twenty notices mailed, one was returned in favor, zero in opposition, and the Planning and Zoning Commission by a six-zero vote recommends approval.
Any questions of Heather?
McKeller's so moved.
I like that.
Second, Sellers.
Great. We've got a motion by McKeller, second by Sellers. Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you for doing that. Anybody call in? Hope not.
We got one on Z four.
Okay. I think we're having some, okay, there we go. All right. The applicant is requesting a zone change to allow for the development of detached single-family homes. To the north is zoned RPO for office and Plan Unit Residential. And to the east is Plan Unit Residential as well and the location of single-family homes. To the south is office and undeveloped and to the west is office and single-family, which contains undeveloped land as well as single-family homes. This request would amend the Future Land Use Guide from multifamily and mixed-use center to single-family medium-low density. The applicant is requesting this change to allow for the development of twenty-six detached single-family homes and a clubhouse at a density of two-point-seven-six units per acre. The development would utilize private streets and would include a gated entrance from New Copeland Road. The green belt, or a green belt and an eight-foot tall fence would also be located along the New Copeland Road frontage. It will also include one-point-three-seven acres of common usable space, which is approximately fifteen percent of the site. The proposed setbacks are twenty feet in the front yard, ten feet in the rear yards, five feet on the side yards and then a twenty-foot corner side yard setback. The opposite, there was opposition. One letter returned for this at a two-point-nine percent protest and they stated that they preferred that the property be zoned for office use. And with that, the Planning and Zoning Commission by a five-zero vote recommends approval.
Any questions of Heather? Cassandra, did you say there's a, someone that's called in?
All for questions?
All in for questions? Okay. I'll entertain a motion. Move to approve Z four.
Second.
We've got a motion by Curtis, second by Westbrook. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Z five.
This is a request to change the zoning to institutional to allow for a proposed parking lot garage for Chris's Trinity Mother Frances Hospital. You can see in, in this slide here that most of the property is zoned for institutional and is a property owned by the hospital. The Future Land Use Guide identifies this area as institutional and this is consistent with the request and is also consistent with the Midtown Area Development Plan that recommends supporting expansion areas for medical uses. Of the five notices mailed, zero returned in favor or in opposition to this request and the Planning and Zoning Commission by six-zero vote recommends approval.
Any questions of Heather?
Heather, how big of a garage are they planning?
I don't have that information, but there are three more cases after this where they're closing some alleys and so you can possibly see the, the area in which they're identifying for the parking garage.
Move to approve Z five.
Second.
Second, uh, motion by Wins, second by Sellers. Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Uh, motion carries. Z six.
And Council, I have two items here for thoroughfare closures and I'll just present them together as they are very similar. And again, this, these closures are to see that vision for the future parking garage. The applicant is requesting unimproved alley rights of way to replat the rights of way into all the adjacent properties and they would serve as that parking garage for the hospital. The plats would require that any easements be dedicated and it would need to be replatted within six months. Of the five notices mailed, zero returned in favor or in opposition to this request.
Any questions of Heather? Move to approve Z six and Z seven.
Second.
Uh, motion by Wins, second by Sellers. Any further discussion? All of them. We're just, we're just doing Z six, correct?
You can, Z's.
Are we doing them together?
It's, uh.
Or have you presented?
They're, they're both.
Because, yeah, Councilman Wins was for both six and seven.
Yes.
Y'all can take it that way or you can break them apart. Do you prefer them broken apart?
Uh, I'm sorry, did you present both of them at the same time?
At the same time, yes.
And they may property rights, so, but they may.
So, his, his motion can stand for six and seven together?
Yes.
Okay. Was there a second for six and seven together?
Yes. Sellers.
Sellers, okay. Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
And this next item is a, a request for a, uh, an appeal to a decision from the Planning and Zoning Commission. This is a forty-seven lot subdivision containing just under twenty-five acres of land located north of the northwest intersection, or northeast intersection of County Road one-seventy-eight, which is known as Jonestown Road and Club Drive. The applicant is appealing the decision, uh, which denied the plat and with the requested modifications. The Unified Development Code has street extensions or, which are required to link subdivisions to contiguous unplatted land except for subdivisions with private streets. And for, for this case, what you had is a, or a subdivision, a preliminary plat to the north, which previously did not have, it had a stubout and, but it, in, in, in the process of considering this plat today, there was a preliminary plat, a new preliminary plat, which removed that stubout and it called for, or for private streets, which really changed the, the scenario. So, whenever we see a stubout and we have a new plat request, we have to make sure that those street connections happen. But it really just boils down to a timing issue here. And now that we know that we have a preliminary plat submitted, that can be something that is considered by the council in looking at this appeal to the variance. And the variance was to, to the limits of the block lengths that are less than twenty or twelve-hundred linear feet. And so, with, with this, the staff would recommend that the council consider the preliminary plat as it has been currently received. It's in the office and it's going to be heard at the January meeting. And so, with that knowledge, you can see that this plat today would be in conformance once that preliminary plat is approved.
So, what you're saying, the plat to the north has been amended?
It, it will, yes. It will be officially amended in January, once it's heard by the Planning and Zoning Commission. And it, it would cause, there are no reason to be a stubout for the plat that we have before you today.
Which is what this one has, has no stubout.
Exactly. And because it's in the ETJ, uh, the, the lengths of the, the block lengths are, are similar to what you'd see in, in a more rural setting. So, that, that can also be considered by the council.
And there's three exits onto major roadways?
Um, let's see here.
I think going back to the.
Oh, the other plat.
I do have a card here from Chris Cooper. If, if anybody wants to direct any questions to Chris or?
There's actually four.
Come on up, Chris. Can you state your name and address for the record when you get up here?
Yes, sir. Chris Cooper, one-six-five-zero-eight Haley Court. I want to correct, it's actually seventy-four lots and not forty-seven lots. And we have two exits going out. That Stub Street was put in and then they came back to us and they told us that the subdivision to the north was going to be private. So, once they emailed us and told us that, we took the Sub Street out.
So, can you point out that Sub Street?
It's, that's the subdivision to the north.
Okay.
That's not my plat.
See the circle?
Yes, okay, yes.
The circle was going to go down into your, into your subdivision.
Yes, sir. Exactly.
Which, which no longer exists.
No longer exists because they came back to us. We got an email from Cal and the engineers told us that that was going to be a private subdivision. So, we actually did exactly what they told us to do. But then, when we came to P and Z, they denied us because we didn't have the Sub Street in. Now, the week before Thanksgiving, we emailed them Monday, Tuesday and Wednesday because we knew the holiday was coming up, did y'all need anything from us? And they said no. So, this all started back in July and then this subdivision right here came back to be a private subdivision. So, basically, we did exactly what we supposed to have done, but they held us up because of the subdivision to the north.
So, their, their plat that has, where the circle is, no longer, that part, that road just no lo, that's no longer exist on the plat that's coming in January?
Yes, sir. If we was to put that in, that would be straight to someone's backyard.
Okay. Was a clean, this kind of a cleanup item?
Right. Yes.
Yes. Any other questions for Chris? Move to approve Z eight.
Second.
Uh, got a motion by McGee, uh, second by Westbrook. Cassandra, anybody calling?
No, sir.
Uh, any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Motion carries. Okay. Yeah, it's working, it's working. Yeah. All right, um, where are we? H1.
Good morning, mayor and council. My name is Dustin Wilson, I'm the CDVG manager, and this is a request that the city council consider conducting a public hearing and approve the program year 2019 CAPR, or Consolidated Annual Performance Evaluation Report, for submission to HUD. As the council is aware, every year the city gets, receives the Community Development Block Grant and Home Grants from the Department of Housing and Urban Development. As part of that process, every five years, we're required to submit a five-year consolidated plan and each year an annual action plan, just telling HUD how we're planning to use the funds during that time period. At the end of each program year, we're required to submit a consolidated annual performance evaluation report, simply a CAPR, simply to tell HUD how, what we did, and what accomplishments we've made over that year, and if we could go to the next slide. This program year, program year 2019, which falls from October 1st, 2019 to the following September 30th, we demolished seven substandard structures. We brought 49 substandard structures into compliance with city code. We assisted with nine home rehabilitation, uh, provided, nine homes, I'm sorry, with rehabilitation assistance. We were on track to do 11 homes. Unfortunately, COVID caused the last two to just kind of say, we don't want contractors coming in our house right now, and so we had to postpone those two. We did complete infrastructure improvements to the TJ Austin Sidewalk and MHJ Scott Park, and I put a little asterisk there just because we did work on the Hidden Palace infrastructure. It was completed, I believe, in sometime in October. Unfortunately, with the way HUD regulations require us to report, because it was not completed in program year 2019, we can't report it in, as accomplished in 2019, on this CAPR, but it will be reported next year. The total investment of CDVG funds was approximately $1.6 million, and that's, it was entirely out of CDVG funds. As part of the CAPR process, we are encouraged to have public, public hearings to obtain citizen comments. And so this is, staff recommends that we conduct a public hearing to obtain any citizen comments, and then following the hearing, staff requests the council approve the CAPR for submission to HUD.
All right, we will now open up a public hearing for, for this item. I've got a card here from Tyler Russell. Is there Tyler Russell?
Is that the one who, the guy who just walked out, Cassandra? Oh, okay.
I guess he's not here. Is, is anyone else here to speak on this item? Showing nobody coming forward. Has anybody called in, Cassandra?
No, sir.
Okay, we will now close the public hearing. So now we need to take action?
Yes, sir, if you will make a motion to approve submission of the CAPR to HUD.
Move to approve H1. Sir Sellers?
Got a motion by Sellers, second by McGee. Any further discussion?
I have one question. I mentioned this before, and I don't know if this is the proper time to do this or not, but my concern with getting for the students, the children that live north of Martin Luther King, getting across that walkway of that street, there is no walkway, to get over to go to the park. Excuse me, sorry. There is a hill, and I watched those students run across the street, and cars are coming pretty fast. And so I asked about a crosswalk to get the students from that side of the community over across Martin Luther King to get over to the park to play. I wanted to mention that again.
Okay. Absolutely, yes, ma'am. I'll work with our, I'll work with my supervisor, and, and probably, I'll probably have to pull in the traffic engineer as well, but we'll explore different options.
Sure, thank you.
Thanks, Shirley.
Thank you.
We have a motion and a second. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. O1, Peter.
Thank you. I'm here, council. Item O1 before you. This is our ordinance. Typically, every year about this time, we do an ordinance to amend our budget, and typically it's items that we didn't, weren't able to complete in the last fiscal year. And so basically, it's kind of what we call as rolling the funds over so that we can complete the purchases or the different construction projects that we need to do. So that's what O1 is, it's a request to do that. Also, just in the spirit of transparency, what we did is, there are some new items actually included in there, and they're notated on the detail in your packet, and I'll, I'll cover those as well. And also, after we complete O1, I'll do M1, which is the revenue expenditure report from last fiscal year. So these two items kind of go together, it kind of shows you what our actual results were compared to budget for last year, and so it gives you some indication of the funds that we have. Also, when you, when you look at the particular ordinance in the budget, the detailed ordinance, below each fund, I show the net impact of the fund balance, and then what the new fund balance will be in the new fiscal year after the budgetary fund balance after the amendments are included in the budget. So what we'll do is we'll start out with the general fund, and I want, not going to bore you with all the details, you've got them, I'll just kind of touch some of the highlights as well. We, in particular, the major highlight is we received a CARES grant funding of $5.9 million, and I'll cover that in the next item as well, to reimburse us from our, for some of our public safety expenditures. So you'll see that as we go in the general fund, we've got a budget amendment there of $295,000. That's to pay our administrator to help us, to help us get that grant and, and the administration part of it. Also, we're looking at helping the Health District out for approximately $40,000 for some improvements over, over there at their building, and also, there's various traffic items, there's small dollar amounts, and just some adaptive control items, and some desk, desktop PCs as well. Okay, we'll move to Fund 102. Fund 102 is our General Capital Projects Fund, and typically, what we do is, any excess fund balance that we have from the prior year rolls into, into Fund 102. It, it requires a budget amendment to do that. But the CARES grant that I referred to that we're receiving actually happened in last fiscal year, fiscal year that we're referring to. So that, those funds will be deposited into the general fund, and it will increase that, that fund balance. But going into Fund 102, this is a particularly new item. We're proposing doing some remodel enhancement to our Neighborhood Services building. Also, we're looking at doing some parking lot improvements at our Center for Healthy Living over on Highway 155, and also the purchase and remodel of our new fire admin building. That, that is a, a new item as well. Also, Fund 103, which we dedicate about 2 cents of our property tax rate for the street improvement fund. We had some dollars left over from the street overlay program, so we're rolling forward Cemetery fund, approximately $13,566 that we're rolling forward there for some improvements, there, land improvements. We'll go down to 219, which is our Tourism Fund. Our Tourism Fund is basically Harvey Rose Garden, and a lot of their revenue comes from, from the hot fund as well. We're looking at some building improvements of $42,000. Also, there's a downtown grant reimbursement for National Historic District nominations of about $50,000, and then at Liberty Hall, we're looking to replace some lights, which is about $5,200. Also, in our Rainy Day Fund, we're looking at transferring about $3.5 million there. A large part of that came from the CRF grant that we received, so we're going to set aside those dollars to be, to be used at some future point. Also, Fund 286, we're looking at funds to purchase a bus. A lot of the, the items there just wasn't ready to, we hadn't received it by year-end, so that's about $400,000. Also, Fund 503, we're looking at two different items, about $750,000, $400,000 two-inch water line replacement, and $350,000 Golden Road Treatment Plant filters. And Fund 503 is our Capital Projects Fund for our Water Utilities Fund. Fund 639 is our Productivity Fund, which includes our internal audit contracts, CDU, productivity pay, and, and those types of things. So we're looking at some personal training expenses. There was some software upgrades we had to do last fiscal year because we couldn't do a lot of in-person training, so we're, so we bought software to do virtual-type training. Well, we're hoping by the end of this fiscal year that we can bring some in-person training back, and so that's what these dollars will be for. Also, on our Fleet Fund, as you see, there's numerous trucks and items that we didn't receive by year-end, and that's approximately $1.7, $1.8 million that we're needing to amend the budget for. A lot of these things were slowed down particularly because of the coronavirus. It just takes longer to get, get some of these items in. So that concludes my budget amendment. I recommend that city council consider approving the attached ordinance, amending the fiscal year 2020, 2021 budget, to provide funding to complete various construction projects, motor vehicles, and other purchases not completed by September 30, 2020, as anticipated.
So just to clarify, all the items you just read were things that were supposed to, were going to be spent in 1920 budget?
That's correct.
That was being carried over, so, so these things were already basically approved prior, in the prior budget year, but to be spent in this budget year?
Right. That's correct, with the exception of the Neighborhood Services remodel and the Fire Administration Office.
McKellar moved to approve.
Second.
We've got a motion by McKellar and a second by Curtis. Any further discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. So was that presentation, did it also include M1? Are you about to do anything?
I'm about to cover M1.
Okay.
So, yes. And, and also, just to let you all know, we typically, we typically do the budget amendment... Oh, I'm sorry.
Did you want to take a break? Because Kedrick can get kind of lengthy. Or did you want to just keep on going?
It'd be appropriate to do it now, Mr. Mayor. It'd be appropriate now if you wanted to take a break. Your choice.
Let's take a quick break.
Okay.
Five minutes.
Eight minutes. No, 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 you did fine, you did fine. I wanted to get them out. Just, they've been going nonstop since 8 o'clock, and so I just wanted them to...
Opportunity to stretch their legs a little bit.
Man, telling his long wind today.
Well, what I was referring to is, some people have on their surplines at their houses the overflow protectors, so if pipes did overflow, it pushes the cap up and allows it to overflow in the yard, so that was my one question. You know what I'm talking about?
I tell you, that means I need to leave quickly.
You know, you know, I'm never going to say no. But, I just also know that you, you know, you're not spending some time talking about this. It's not going to be, you need to, you need to.
I'm going to show you today.
All right. Let's see what you got. Welcome back, everyone. We're going to jump out of order just a little bit and go to M five. Lisa?
Thank you, Mayor and Council. Good morning.
Good morning.
Lisa Crossman, City Engineer. This is a request to authorize the city manager to enter into a development agreement with Warner Taylor Land and Development LP for partial funding of the extension of Three Lakes Parkway. As you may know, for the past several years, Warner Taylor Land Development has been developing properties on the south side of Three Lakes Parkway between Old Jacksonville Highway and County Road One Ninety-Two. In addition, TISD built Three Lakes Middle School just west of Old Jacksonville Highway on the north side of Three Lakes Parkway. And so, as the, all of these various developments have occurred, we've ended up with two sections of the street that are built. The section on the east end from Old Jacksonville heading west through the middle school, and then on the west side from County Road One Ninety-Two that heads east. And that leaves a substantial part in the middle unbuilt at the moment. So, ordinarily, these street extensions are built as development occurs, which means that we would be getting the, the completion of this street at some future unknown time and in pieces as the various developments occur, both on the north and south side of the street. Warner Taylor, Warner Taylor Land and Development did actually approach the city and request a cost participation agreement that would allow us to complete two lanes of this, of the section between the two completed lanes. And this is primarily due to the fact that this street is on the city's master street plan as an arterial. And because of the traffic that's generated by all of these various developments and by the middle school, the city believes that this connection is really needed in order to facilitate the traffic coming in and out of these various developments. And so, the agreement stipulates that the developer would be responsible for sixty-point one percent of the total cost of the street. TISD would be responsible for ten percent of the cost, and their participation currently is pending approval by the TISD School Board. And that would leave the city responsible for twenty-nine point nine percent of the cost. So, right now, the city's total estimated cost is nine hundred and sixty thousand, three hundred and twenty-two dollars. And that cost represents not just the city's portion for building the street that is currently unbuilt, but it would also retroactively cover what would be the city's cost had we participated from the very beginning and when those two sections of street were built.
So, just quickly, when you say a two-lane street, is that like just a typical?
Correct. The master street plan does define it as an arterial, so eventually, it will be a four-lane roadway, you know, two lanes in either direction. But because of Warner Taylor Land Development owns the property on the south side of the street, what they are proposing to build right now and asking the city to participate would be the two lanes that connect the two lanes on the west end in front of the Primrose Development to the four lanes that currently exist in front of the middle school. So, it would go from Old Jacksonville, four lanes, and then down to two lanes through to County Road One Ninety-Two. And then, of course, when the property's on the north side of Three Lakes, if those ever develop, that developer would be responsible by ordinance to complete the north half of Three Lakes Parkway.
So, is that road it connects to, is that Old Noonday?
Yes. County Road.
So, when you go, so, so if this was really popular and people use it and go to Old Noonday and go up to Grande?
Correct.
Will there eventually be a light there?
I believe that there will be. We currently have Kim Lee Horn, who is working on our citywide traffic study. They're doing traffic counts at that intersection, and I do believe that eventually we'll find that a signal is warranted there.
And you were referring to Old Noonday and Three Lakes?
So, now, will there be a center turn lane? So, would it actually be three lanes or will it just be two lanes with no center turn?
It will be two lanes.
Let me, there was a question Councilman Sellers asked. I want to make sure you got it answered, though. She, she asked about the, I guess, the location of the traffic signal. But the, but the location of the traffic signal is planned for Old Noonday and Grande, correct?
Correct.
Not Old Noonday and Three Lakes.
Yes, that, that would be very important. That's why I was asking that question because that's a very, there was a wreck there this week, so.
Well, that's become a cap 3, too.
Yeah, it is. That's it.
Any other questions for Lisa? I've got one card for, from Mark Priestner. If anybody has any questions or, for Mark, anybody have any questions for Mark?
Motion to approve that file.
Second.
Got a, a motion by McGee, second by Sellers. Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Thank you.
All right. Now, we'll go back to M one. Is this going to be an exciting presentation?
What was your question?
I think I got my cue.
It is for some of us. Right, Kedrick?
I'll, I'll try to make it as exciting as it possibly can be. Just a clarification back on item oh one. You will be seeing another budget amendment ordinance coming sometime in January, but those will be related to our grants. So, I just want to let you know that those will be coming as well. Okay? So, we've got item M one before you, Mayor and Council. This is our quarterly revenue expenditure report, and this report basically compares our quarter ending September thirty, twenty twenty. So, this is kind of our final numbers as we go into audit. These numbers could change a little bit based on how our audit goes, but they should be pretty close. So, this report represents about seventy percent of our appropriations. The other funds are Internal Service Funds, Special Revenue Funds, and Capital Project Funds that, that are in our audit, and you've also seen them as well.
What was that card that just came up on the screen?
That's her screensaver piece.
That's her screen.
So, occasionally, you'll see Cassandra's picture or a car. Some of those subliminal things we see.
I didn't know if that was something Kedrick was trying to get passed through.
You know, I think he's trying to add some excitement to my report here.
He just wants to be a tractor.
I understand. It's boring information. But anyway, I'll just hit some of the highlights, and definitely, if you all have questions, I'll be, I'll be glad to answer those. We'll start out with the general fund. Revenues were approximately five point three million greater than budget. Large part of that was the CRF funds that we received to reimburse our public safety expenses related to the coronavirus. That grant was approximately about five point nine million dollars. And so, we did book that back to, to last fiscal year. Sales tax was a, had, was a very interesting ride. We ended the year about six tenths of a percent up on our actuals compared to the prior year. We had, we had a decline. Our largest decline was in June. It was about twenty and, twenty and a half percent. And June represented April's activity, so that was really the first full month of, of the stay-at-home order, and so we were down twenty and a half percent. We were very fortunate. In the following month, we had an audit correction that was approximately eighteen and a half percent. So, pretty much, the timing couldn't have been any better. So, we recovered quite a bit, and, and I think it's just, we're very fortunate that we could end the year with up six tenths of a, of a percent. Just, I'll hit just a few of the other revenues in the fund. Our mixed beverage was down about seventeen percent, which is definitely expected. Our fines and penalties were down about thirteen percent or about five hundred and twenty-eight thousand dollars. There was just less, less traffic on the road. I'm sure officers were very cautious about contact that they were having with citizens early on, so it, it, that all shows in our revenues. Also, our methane gas sales from the landfill was down about forty-one percent. But that equates to about a hundred and thirty-seven thousand dollars, just reflection of some of the oil and gas prices. Our expenditures in the general fund, we came in under budget about almost one point two million dollars under budget. That's our expenditures above the line. If you include the transfers below the line, we were approximately one point six million less than budget. And a large part of that was, there's a transfer that the general fund generally makes to the transit fund for the local match. So, that transfer, we were able to lessen that transfer by about four hundred and fifty thousand dollars. And that was largely due to transit being able to achieve CARES grant funding as well. So, we'll move on to our Water Utilities Fund. Okay? Our revenues were about nine hundred and twenty-seven thousand greater than budget. Our revenues were about $927,000 greater than budget. Our expenditures were about $1.4 million less than budget. Early on, we were not thinking that, we were thinking we were going to miss our budget, but when we got into August and September, we kind of recovered some ground there, just through more irrigating and it's a little bit drier time of year, so we were able to recover there as well. Solid waste, next slide. Okay? So our revenues were $803,000 greater than budget. Our expenditures were $432,000 greater than budget. Large part of our excess revenues were from roll-off collections. We had a real good year on the roll-off collections there. Also, on the commercial front-load side and residential side, we were slightly over-budget on those, which were good things. On the expenditure side, we're still seeing high maintenance costs. Some of the trucks that I mentioned to you earlier on in some earlier quarterly reports, we were delayed on getting those because of coronavirus, and apparently the maintenance is just really rough on those trucks that we need to get replaced. Also, we're looking at our temp agency budgets as well, so we'll continue to monitor that fund, but that fund ended the year in the black, so. Airport fund, we'll move on to the next slide. Our revenues were $219,000, almost $220,000 greater than budget. Expenditures were about $150,000 less than budget. A large part of the reason why we're over-budget on revenues is because of, once again, CARES funding. Airport received, I think approximately $1.2 million for the, from the CARES fund, their own particular CARES funds. And we actually drew down about $903,000 last fiscal year. So we have another three that we can draw down in the current fiscal year, and with the fund balance that we have, we should be able to make it through this current fiscal year and still be in the black. And hopefully, by the end of this fiscal year, our activity will go back to normal. So I think we're going to be okay there. We'll just need to monitor that carefully. So development services? So revenues were less than budget by $322,000. But there was an actual, but when you compare actuals to actuals, we were approximately 3% higher than last fiscal year. So we just, we missed the mark on what we were budgeting. The expenditures were about $102,000 less than budget, and also you'll remember back during the budget, we did some fee changes there, particularly on the residential side. We're charging by square foot versus valuation, and we did some fee increases. So this fund balance is coming down on this fund, but we'll watch and monitor, and hopefully with the fee increases, we'll stabilize this fund. But as far as I understand, the activity is still good. There's a lot of building going on around town, and the overall real estate market is just, it's kind of crazy. You know, it's kind of hard to understand with everything going on, but it's surviving well. Our hot fund, which will be the next slide. Okay? This particularly is a fund that we really felt the coronavirus. Particularly, our revenues were about $940,000 less than budget. When you compare actual to actual, we're about $824,000 less than the prior year. And our expenditures were about $591,000 less than budget. At our highest point, we were about, we had about a 66% decline in collections, and I believe that occurred in about the month of May. And by year end, we were at about a 15% decline. And for the first two months of this year, we're bouncing between 15 and 20% down. So hopefully by the spring, early summer, we'll kind of get back to normal revenues in that fund, is what I'm hoping. Okay? So our revenues were $562,000, $63,000 approximately greater than budget. Expenditures were $559,000 greater than budget. A large part of the reason why we're over-budget on revenues, we were able to get some rebates on our RX claims of approximately $304,000. And unfortunately, we had to get stop-loss reimbursements. I mean, it's good to have the insurance, but we did get $469,000 in stop-loss reimbursements, which leads into our expenditures. Part of the reason why we were over-budget on our expenditures is our health claims. They were over-budget about $895,000. Also, our RX claims were under-budget by about $224,000. So we'll just continue to monitor the health fund as we go in through this fiscal year. Probably about the late February timeframe, I'll have your first quarter results and report.
So are you saying that the expenditures were greater than budget or less than budget?
The expenditures were greater than budget.
Could I address that, please, Kedrick?
Yes, ma'am.
Did we earlier, or maybe in our budget discussions, talk about transferring some of that fund out of the employee benefit fund? I see the $5 million's still in there, so.
Yeah, we actually ended with about $5.6 million in our fund balance. We had estimated back during the budget, we would end with about $6.2, so we missed it by about $500,000 or $600,000.
So you won't be transferring anything?
Well, going into next fiscal year, we're going to look at the premiums that are going to be paid by the employees, as well as the premiums paid by the city. So there will have to be some adjustment going into the next fiscal year.
Well, I would just caution this council that when I came on five and a half years ago, there was no fund balance. And we've done a lot of things with a lot of work with committees to solve that issue. And now that we are lasering out that one individual, I don't think we should transfer any money out of this fund. Remember, we paid an extra $500,000 when he was lasered out, plus we're now going to be paying his claims, because that means that there's no stop-loss for him. So just a caution as you go forward, since I only have five and a half months left.
Thank you. Appreciate those comments. So that concludes my quarter-ending report for September 30th, 2020. It's recommended that you all review and approve of the report.
Thank you, Kedrick. I'll entertain a motion to accept the revenue and expenditure report.
Move to program one.
Motion by McKeller.
Motion by Westbrook. I'm going to give it to McKeller. Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Thank you, Kedrick.
Mayor, just like to address item M2. It's related to our internal audit contract. And just wanted to give you a little, I'm not going to actually present it, I'm going to ask Lauren Justice to come up. She's our accounting manager, and she works real close with the internal audit contract. But just to give you a little history, we have been conducting internal audits for, since about 2005. And for about the last five years, we had an in-house internal auditor. And so about for the last five years, we've had an actual contract internal audit. So she's going to go over the details of this item, and if you all have any questions, we'll be glad to answer.
Hi, Mayor and Council. You have item M2 in front of you. It is a request that the city council authorize the city manager to sign the letter of engagement for internal audit services for fiscal year '21 through '25. We received three bids, with Henry and Peters scoring the highest on our ranking system and receiving, and having the lowest price. Our ranking system included the financial strength of the applicant, reputation of the applicant, completeness of the application, ability to perform and provide the required and requested services, physical location of the applicant, and any previous relationship with the City of Tyler. The letter of engagement of internal audit services has a maximum estimated fee of $55,000 for this fiscal year, $59,375 for fiscal year '22, $61,750 for fiscal year '23 and '24, and $64,125 for fiscal year '25. The primary focus this fiscal year will be to update our risk assessment and rank each department, and then begin on our internal audit process. We have reviewed the letter of engagement for internal audit services and recommend that the city council authorize the city manager to execute the contract and engagement letter with Henry and Peters for the internal audit services for fiscal year '21 through '25.
Any questions of Lauren? Motion by McGee?
Second.
Second by Winn. Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Thank you, Mayor. M3. In March of this year, council awarded an engineering contract to Adams Engineering to evaluate the options and provide a design to convert the private driveway for the Heritage Building that runs between Bellwood Road and Robin Street into a city street. This would bring the pavement section up to city standards, which would include increasing the width of the pavement and adding curb and gutter. Adams Engineering estimated the cost for this full street pavement section would cost the city around $700,000. So the decision was made not to move forward with that conversion into a city street, but rather to just repave the existing driveway, keeping it at the same width, but just repairing and repaving that driveway. So staff thought the most expedient way to do that work would be to add this work to the existing 2020 asphalt enhancement project contract, i.e. the overlay contract that we have with LS Equipment Incorporated. They estimated the cost to add that section to their contract. The estimated cost is $81,761.53, and staff recommends approval of this change order.
Any questions of Lisa? Entertaining motion?
So, Mayor.
Motion by Sellers, second by Westbrook. Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. M4.
All righty. In September, council approved a construction contract which would replace the existing concrete line channel from Oleander Drive to Oak Bend with an enclosed box culvert. Construction is currently underway, but our design engineer, Sean Bergen-Polk, did discover that an error was made in the design of the box culvert, which made it necessary to basically double the capacity of that culvert, which means that we would be installing a second box culvert parallel to the one that's currently being built. In addition to that extra box culvert, we would need to increase the size of all the curb inlets at each of the street crossings to accommodate that second box culvert, as well as do some additional rework at the outfall, which is the little section of open channel that is south of Oak Bend. So as I mentioned, the construction is currently underway. So they had already started working on that outfall section, but some very minor revisions are going to have to be made to the work that's already been done to accommodate this second box culvert that's going to have to be built. And therefore, we are asking for approval of change order number one to Reynolds &amp; Kay in the amount of $231,111.
So when a vendor realizes that they've not sized something correctly and they changed what they've done, there's not another bill from them? That's just carried by, covered by their original invoice to the city?
That's correct, on the engineering side. So obviously, we're asking for a change order for the construction contract. The engineer has not requested a change order to do any additional work. They are covering that cost. In addition to just covering the cost of any additional work that would be required of them for this extra construction, they will actually be paying the city an amount equal to $24,600. That amount is going to cover this rework that is having to be done in that little section south of Oak Bend, and also just includes an amount, the rework is $14,600, and then they're going to just give us an extra $10,000 on top of that, which would cover any additional costs that may occur before construction is complete.
Well, I've got a little bit of heartburn with this, and the reason is, is that I physically went out on the job site, and I'm not an engineer, whether educated or practiced at all. But when you start talking about taking a 60-inch pipe, and now all of a sudden they're putting at the bottom of the hill this flow into half of that size of an opening, something just doesn't seem right to me. And then, then all of a sudden, because it comes down to the math, of course, as to what the flow rates are and so on, what the pipe will handle, the fall, all of that is considered. And this engineer, I mean, that's a big mistake, isn't it?
It is. It's an unfortunate mistake, but...
And I agree with that. And where I'm going with this is, is that engineering firms take out E&amp;O insurance, and you can explain the acronym, but the E&amp;O insurance covers mistakes that they make in engineering planning and so on, and it covers the cost of the construction and everything. And so this is, it's a major mistake by them, and I understand that it's unfortunate that they would make a mistake like this. But can we press them for them to pay for the cost of this change order through their E&amp;O insurance? Is that something that we wouldn't want to entertain?
I don't think you can be able to get it through errors and omissions, just because the project itself should have been designed, and that's ultimately what they come to. And so the work that, the work hasn't been done for us to have a complete error on. The error is on their design. They have since looked at it and understand that their design work was incomplete in relationship to being able to do the full project. The full project should have cost this amount, the additional $231,000 been bid out, because that's what the design should have reflected. Now, they are covering, what little work has happened that kind of opened up their eyes that this is a bigger, as far as drainage situation that they should have designed, that when they are covering that cost for, to remedy that situation.
Okay, and they're...
Can we at least explore the E&amp;O regarding that?
Sure.
I mean, I tend to agree with Bob, because we see it every day in the insurance world. It's at least worth asking, you know, if they had the knowledge and...
Yes, ma'am. Yeah, we can certainly look into that.
Mr. Crossman? My question on this is, is that a amount, are we spending any more with this change order than we would have with the initial, if it had been in the initial bid package?
No, sir. Reynolds &amp; Kay evaluated the work that's being added, and other than the $14,600, which is, again, the rework that has occurred south of Oak Bend, all of the rest of this cost would... cost would have been in the original contract if the error had not occurred in the first place.
And this is a, a small number compared to what you've got up there, but so I want to make sure on the breakdown of that bid, they had mobilization in the 2000s, and it says in the notice that that's just the, that's just the bond addition for this change order, the additional cost of the bond?
Correct.
Okay.
And you might visit with Sarah McCracken about her opinion of that? Now, the answer you get depends on who you ask sometimes, and...
So, in, in the interest of moving the project forward, I'm going to reluctantly make a motion that we approve M4, but I, I would really like for us to explore more about just what type of liability claim that they have that, that could be pressed against their E&amp;O insurance. But I'll, I move to approve M4.
I'll second that.
Got a motion by Westbrook, second by Curtis. Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Thank you, Lisa.
M6.
Good morning, Tiffany.
Item M6 is an engineering services contract with Adams Engineering for the force main and air relief valve inspection. So, we have 94,360 linear feet of force main throughout our system and 27 air relief valves. As a part of our consent decree, we are required to inspect those force mains and air release valves each year. So, this engineering services contract includes walking of the, all of the system, all of the force mains, and inspecting the air release valves as we complete those inspections of the force mains, identifying any problems that need to be remediated, and then putting together specifications and plans so that we can move on to construction phase services, should it be needed. The total contract amount is not to exceed $141,840, and I would like to point out that there will be a minor amendment to the language in the contract. The inspection phase services will be hourly, so if they do not need all of that time to inspect the lines and it goes faster, the cost of the project will be less. So, our recommendation is that the City Council authorize the city manager to execute an engineering services agreement in the amount not to exceed $141,800 with Adams Engineers and Development Consultants for the force main and air release valve inspection and design.
Any questions for Tiffany?
I'll do that. Oh, go ahead, Mayor.
The, the design part of this contract is, is, of course, this is, this is because I'm ignorant of this, so if they find something that's not working, it's not just replace it necessarily, it could be, is it too small, or...
So, the air relief valve, it would be a replacement, so they would put together specifications for the air release valve.
Or what type?
Exactly, yes, sir. As well as if a portion of the force main needs to be repaired or replaced for some reason.
To really show my ignorance, what is a force main?
Force main is a portion of our sanitary sewer system that's under pressure. So, a lot of the lines that we talk to you about, we say gravity mains, so those gravity flow, they go downhill, but our force mains are under pressure.
Okay, thank you.
So, now, this is a, a second inspection of a line that we've already had cleaned and inspected?
Yes, sir.
True.
So, Pipeline Analysis did our original inspection of all of the system, including the force main and ARVs, and they put together a remediation plan, which most of those items have already been addressed, and so this is the follow-up annual inspection.
Okay. I know just enough to be dangerous, but it looked like a screw-on, screw-off piece, so that's not necessarily the case, though, what you're saying? That it would have to be evaluated by an engineer to determine if there's any collateral adjustment, maintenance, replacement that needed to be made in the line before and after the valve, including the valve, correct?
That's right. They, they would make a recommendation of what remediation measures need to take place should defects be found.
So moved by McKellar.
Motion by McKellar, second by McGee. Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Item N7 is an engineering services contract in the amount of $99,680 with Adams Engineering for the sanitary sewer line relocation design. We have a 10-inch sanitary sewer line that's existing in the 2800 block of South Southwest Loop 323 that is in critical condition. It's been assessed, there's quite a bit of erosion, it runs right along a creek, you can see in the image there, the green line on the west side of the page is the line in question, and it does pretty much parallel that creek, which has caused a lot of erosion issues, and it's compromising the integrity of the line. So, what we are proposing is to relocate that line, pull it away from the creek a little bit. So, the engineering services for this project includes approximately 1,200 linear feet of gravity main relocation design. We will need to acquire some easements in order to relocate the line, and it also includes construction phase services for the project. The request is that the City Council authorize the city manager to execute an engineering services contract in the amount not to exceed $99,680 with Adams Engineering for the sanitary sewer line relocation design.
Any questions?
Tiffany, since this is critical, then that you'll come back very near future with the cost for the project?
Yes, sir. We, we plan on, on coming back within a couple of months with a design ready to move forward with construction.
Entertaining motion?
Moved to approve M7.
Second.
Motion by Curtis, second by Sellers. Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. M8.
We can dethrone this thing. Good morning, Mayor Council.
Good morning, Russ.
Yeah, M8 is a request for City Council authorize city manager to award bid number 21-001 to TCMC Commercial of Tyler to furnish all the necessary materials and equipment and superintendents for their portion of the construction, which is $243,164.90. And then also, through Sourcewell National Co-op, a vendor of CXT precast products out of Spokane, Washington, to provide three of a, what's considered a tahos pre-built concrete bathroom for this project, not to exceed $403,920 for a total for the project of $647,084.90. This is part of the, our Half-Cent project, and for, for a problem of fixing bathrooms of age, this is a, 1988 was one portion of the bathroom, and then 1985 is the building you see there, would be actually 1985 when we dig down deep into the history of these projects. We, we already demoed the building there on your right, that was the bathroom. This is the tahos, you can go ahead and move on to the next one, next slide. This is the tahos replacement. We've, Carter Delaney in the building a little bit ago was one of the first ones to get us the concrete. These are actually rated for tornado, so it does give a little added protection for any kind of storm that might would come up in the, in middle of play, or, you know, those type of things have happened. And it, these are, this one would go over there on the softball side, and what we've done to, in addition, if you can move on to the next slide. Just to give you an idea of the, of the cost, this year's total, $647. In 2019, we did the developer construction to get the sewer lines on Greenbrier Road, and this puts us over, technically, we're over $1 million when you put the, the developing or the design cost involved in this. These, bringing the sewer over across underneath 346, getting it over to the line that we installed back in 2019 eliminates the problems that we were having with sewer over there, because we were on septic. And to give you an idea of the usage since 1988, I wish I could put it to math of, of give you an idea, but on a Saturday, we can have 2,500 to 3,000-plus people, not counting our tournaments. And we have, we have pushed and pushed and pushed and, you know, done the basic repairs through the years, and this is a very similar problem we had even at Waldorf with bathrooms that were just, needed to be replaced. And so, we're at this point of going through this process of using TCMC, worked with them. Original bid was a little higher to, to have them do it all in one, but met with them, we could get a little bit more product and, and a cheaper price by us going direct with a co-op dealer. So, that's why we broke it away, used the, deduct the alternate bids, and they're, they're very happy to do it, because they were doing it at their cost. And so, we moved that direction. So, really, this is a, a good plan. It gives us two of these buildings on the soccer side, and in all honesty, it's still not enough, but it's all we can do this year. And, but we, we've got more bathrooms to talk about, so I'm going to move on with this one. But I just recommend that you would award this bid and the purchase of the concrete products as stated for an amount not to exceed $647.84.90.
So, does something like this go to the Parks Board?
We've, we do talk about it with Parks Board, but we've, as far as the, the need, this has been an ongoing project, so we do keep them updated with our projects. And as far as the approval process, we haven't done that, it's just as they're, they're, they're in tune to every year, we give them updates, the, the problems, and this has been one that's been talked about for two or three years now.
In the past, we've discussed keeping those locked in the evenings or when things aren't going on. Does that still happen? Is that a possibility?
When it's under maintenance, we do that, but we're, we have, we do have people that do want to walk, we have people that want to utilize the portion of it. It was interesting that I, I looked at a, an actual thing that got, got me this morning from when this was actually approved, that they approved the locks to be put on, that's why the gates are there, to protect people from driving on the fields, which we've had that problem, but it, it's not been an issue of late, and so we, we allow people to come in. But when they're under maintenance, we will lock them down so that we can ensure that things are not happening, or anybody could play on the fields when we're needing to do the maintenance.
Is that true of all the parks, then?
Uh, the baseball fields have been done that way, but we, a lot of that came through when we were having COVID issues, we would actually just shut them down. But when it's maintenance, we will shut them down, lock them off, because you do have people that have the right to access, and, and so we're, we don't want to appear to close a park off when it, to have access, but if it's truly under maintenance, we've done seeding, we don't want seed, young grass seeding to be trampled on, because it, it does damage, it causes more damage. So, when we're doing stuff like that, we try to do our best to hold off from letting play go on.
Keller moved to approve M8.
Motion by McKellar, second by McGee. Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. M9.
M9 is at Faulkner Park, another problem issue of bathroom, but we're requesting that City Council consider authorizing, managing to award the overall low bid to Paragon Construction and Associates of Tyler, furnish all the necessary materials, equipment, superintendents, and labor in an amount not to exceed $92,853. And this is the lower bathroom, which, if you can see right there in the dot, like a bullseye, back up to that one spot, in that complex, you have the five fields up to the right-hand corner of the picture, there's a bathroom for those lower section, because this is a hill that we're digressing down. And then there's another small bathroom that handles those two smallest bathrooms down there. We have a, a bid out there that I will be bringing back to, to council, but we were wanting to look at some things a little further, but it was an overall bid to, to do both the lower bathroom and that upper bathroom. There is some age deterioration, there is, again, high-use bathrooms that accommodate several thousands of people throughout the year, and I can't imagine, I've remodeled my bathroom probably three times, and, and it's just got the family of, of five and six, you know, at times, but when you have that many thousands of people, we are getting rid of the, in all these locations, we'll no longer have what I call prison bathroom fixtures that, that do cause issue with people wanting to use them. But as we move on this picture here, we will have to address some issues, because there are some construction cosmetics that we're going to come back to later, but it's, it's about funding. We're just making sure we get, get the major things done first, and then we'll come back even in the years ahead of us. And that next slide will... This one, in order to redo anything in this bathroom, we had to do some ADA adjustments where even where the sinks were, the sinks were right in front of the stalls, so there's some movement of fixture. When we go to the upper bathroom, not to talk about it today in the sense of anything construction, that will add some more fixtures in that remodel. This one, we had hoped to add another fixtures on the outside. That pavilion, there's their area there, the original design would be to have some additional fixtures. We just couldn't afford that at this moment in time with the amount of money we had available. And, but we're going to enhance it. Move on to that next slide. I think that's the... Yeah, that was the last one. Again, this is a, a project to help, you're talking about a 20-year-old bathroom of high use. We do have our Texas Little League coming there, and things that are looking embarrassing, there's some things that just need to be taken care of. It's, it's just, what I would like for us to consider is, is we'll be doing this in the future, is with a amortization plan of coming back and visit things more often, now that we do have reoccurring funding, is we can make those plans and not wait 20, 30 years, and that's, that's our guide in the future.
Well, you know what, Russ? I applaud you for what you do, and the magnitude of what you do with so few funds. And, and this is really an important project, because it impacts hotel occupancy tax, because when these tournaments come in, the people have to stay, or they stay in our hotels, they dine in our restaurants, they're spending money, we're getting sales tax off of it. So, these improvements, that just enhance the facility itself, they're actually helping generate income for the city.
Yes.
So, thank you for everything that you do.
Thank you, appreciate it.
Russ, one question for you. I know the soccer facilities and basically, they're being used right now. Is there any enhanced cleaning that's going on?
We, we do go through our parks, and part of it is to do sanitation. We have, when they have a tournament, we have staff, we make mandatory staff. It used to be there would be trade-offs with, we'll clean it, and we found that they weren't, you know, always following through with that, so we just made it where it was mandatory to have staff throughout these tournaments. And so, our, our staff are going in and making sure that trash is being picked up, and then there is some additional sanitation going on. We do that even through the parks. It's, it's hard to keep up with parks in the sense of all the bathrooms, but as staff go through on their daily routine, we're, we are doing additional sanitation as we can.
I move to approve M9.
Motion by Sellers, second by McGee. Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Now, we go to the, the board appointments. Cassandra, on the first one, the Disability Issues Review Board, is there an applicant for that one?
Yes, sir, Jamie Mims.
Can I get a motion for, to approve Jamie Mims?
Motion to approve Jamie Mims from Keller.
Motion by McKellar, second by McGee. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Keep Tyler Beautiful Board, Cassandra, I believe it is, Van Jeter, is that right?
Van Jeter and Victor...
Van Jeter and Victor Vaya.
Move to approve the appointment of Van Jeter and Victor Vaya to the Keep Tyler Beautiful Board.
Cassandra, do we just need to fill one spot or two?
One.
Oh, it said two on it.
I'm sorry, one.
No.
So they have two applicants for one spot?
Okay.
I had received a note requesting that Van Jeter be...
Okay. I withdraw my original motion, and I make a new motion to appoint Van Jeter to the Keep Tyler Beautiful Board.
Motion by Westbrook, second by McGee. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Neighborhood Revitalization Board.
An applicant opposition, Carl Watson.
Is that the only person, Carl Watson?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Can I get a motion to appoint Carl Watson to...
Move to approve Sellers.
Second.
Motion by Sellers, second by Westbrook. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Okay, on the half-cent sales tax board, looks like we've got four spots to, to fill. And what we'll do is, is each council person has a person in their district that they nominate to be on the half-cent board. So Brad, who's your nominee?
John Nix.
Okay. James, who's yours?
Elena Lassio.
Broderick?
Tanya Bickham.
In mine, I've, I've got one choice to be the chairman, and I will nominate Martin So if I can get someone to make a motion to appoint Tanya Bickham, Elena Lassio, John Nix, and Martin Hines to the half-cent sales tax board.
Move to approve.
Motion by Curtis, second by McGee. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Okay, we're on to the consent agenda, and I have been asked to pull one item to be discussed separately, which is CA 10. So we'll come back and talk about that one in just a minute. But if I can get, does anybody want to pull anything else off the consent, anything else? Can I get a motion to...
I move to approve the consent agenda with the exception of CA 10 as presented.
Motion by Westbrook, second by McGee. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Ed, on CA 10?
Yes, sir.
Do you want to explain that one?
Yes, let me pull it up.
It actually involves CA 11 and 12 too, but they're all at Lake Tyler, there's not anything. I just had a question about that process.
So for, yeah, for CA 10, as well as the ones, other items that council member or council sellers may mention up, there are times where people are trying to sell properties they have that on Lake Tyler, and as with that, they'll come across easements right away, different things that the banks are asking us to kind of get cleared up paperwork-wise in order for the sale to go through. And so, those items are kind of just cleanup items, paperwork things that have come through for y'all. CA 10 specifically is about a replat. Section 19 of the Code of Ordinances requires that all replats, resubdivisions, and new subdivision plats of properties on Lake Tyler and certain marginal lands of Lake Tyler East must be approved by the city council.
So are we gonna have to replat every one of those lots? Because it seems the issue is crossing the easement when they're selling the property. And the lenders seem to have a problem with that. Could we just do something that covers all of those at the same time? Because I've gotten several phone calls with realtors trying to market property at one time.
So I'll turn it over to legal, because City Attorney Fulham and also Steve Keen have been the ones that have worked with the banks and the property owners on those lending issues.
So council, council members, sellers, and the rest of the council, we have had throughout the years, and it has been cyclical at times when we're doing things out at the lake. And it comes and goes, but the easements generally are not that much of an easement. It, I mean, of a, an issue. It really depends on who the particular lender is. And we've, we've been able to work with them primarily. Now, we do get some lenders that want to really try to actually get the total easement off. And some of them, you know, on a case-by-case basis, we can work with that, but most of these easements come, they, they go back to when we originally developed the lake. And it also has to do with the city's need for having access to the lake and for our purposes for the lake being the water for the city. And so, a lot of times, those easements are necessary and that we don't really want to mess with them a whole lot. But it really, truly is a case-by-case basis because of where the property is, what the easement is, how that aligns with what our needs are as a city for the water source. And so, but, but our office is, is willing and is capable of, of working with the property owners, the sellers, and the, and the lenders. But it's better to do it on a case-by-case basis, I would recommend.
Just to know, we got into that issue with where boathouses could be placed, and, you know, there were individual decisions made about where those could be placed, and I was hoping this could be taken care of.
It's about the same, it, it's really about the same issues and problems because of the particularity of the, the properties, where they are, what they are, what the easements are, and who is involved in terms of their rights, so.
But on this one, on the plat, is the city giving up property?
You know, I, I am not certain about what we are giving up on that one.
Yeah, this is just two different property lines where, I guess there's a house or there's a, a structure like that may be crossing it that needs to, in order for the bank to approve the loan, get that cleaned up and taken care of. But this isn't a loss of property for the city, this is just cleaning up of essentially an issue of where property already is in relationship to, for the bank loan.
And I understand that both properties are on by the same person, and so it's just simply replating to move the property line that's adjacent to both.
Yeah, I think it's like a parent, I guess, maybe, and a child that's involved in this one, or, and so it's, it, these, like, and this clearly goes to kind of the snowflake theory that the city attorney put forward, is that every one of these is different, and that everyone is. Every one of them has a different issue, a different problem that kind of comes along that we have to kind of work with, to try to figure out how best to resolve to be able to continue to maintain our rights.
Yeah.
As the person who actually owns Lake Tyler and the property, and those that are utilizing the property that we're leasing to.
So how many lots do you anticipate over the next 10 years that we're gonna have this issue? Any idea?
There's, there's no way.
Or is it all the way around the lake?
It'll, it'll be all the way, essentially, however many properties we own over there could be, every one of them is a potential issue. So, but so, but there's no way, it would be a total guess as to what, and then also what are the age of the people, you know, how, what is the amount that people are gonna be selling the properties that they have over there that this may become an issue on the easements and any issues regarding as far as even subdivisional?
Well, in some instances, I could see that there would be judgment based on whether we're gonna do it or not gonna do it, and similar to what happened with the boathouses, so. But if you're comfortable with it, I'm fine with it.
I do have one question for you, Ed.
Yes, sir.
In my research of, of this particular item, I learned that as, in most cases, replating and zoning issues go before P&amp;Z through the planning department. This process, however, because of the lakes, is different. Would you explain that?
So, Chapter 10 is what guides the, the development standards for throughout the city of Tyler, with the exception of when you're talking about Lake Tyler and Lake Tyler East, which is actually outside the city limits in NRETJ. And then that falls into Chapter 19, which then talks about management of Lake Tyler. And so, with Lake Tyler in that one, as your forefathers, however, they wrote those ordinances, decided that for that piece, any replats, not just, not plats, plats can be approved administratively through the utilities department, but replats, resubdivisions need to come to the city council.
Thank you.
James, do you agree with all this?
It's gonna have to be on a case-by-case basis. There are gonna be some that are gonna be very unique, some of that property has stayed in same hands for a long time, and things around it have changed, so I think we just have to look at it on a case-by-case basis, and maybe it won't be every other property, but we won't know until something is asked. I think it's interesting that our forefathers thought that the city should look after our water, which I think that's good forward sight, but who would have thought they would have seen that?
All right. Anybody want to make a motion on CA 10?
Since I asked to pull it, I move that CA 10 be approved.
I'll second that.
Motion by Sellers, second by Westbrook. Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. City managers report.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. Well, a little bit of a special Christmas edition for the city managers' report, talking about a lot of the stuff that our city staff are doing that really is amazing and interaction with the community, especially at this time of the year and this season. The Tyler Senior Center hosted a parking lot bingo game for their members on Thursday, November 19th. They had about 18 participants. The participants stayed in their vehicles the entire time and honked when they had a bingo. And so, we had different groups and companies in town that provided prizes for them and gifts for the bingo winners. It was a success, and we hope to do another one for our seniors this month. The Glass Recreation Center hosted a three-on-three Kings of the Court basketball tournament a couple of weekends ago for the first time. And this is really kind of aimed especially at our youth that we have here in Tyler. Teams were excited and happy to participate, enjoyed a Saturday full of basketball fun. We thanks to all the teams from Tyler and surrounding areas that came out and participated. The tournament was such a success, teams are looking forward to another one. And they also shared this story about the winning team, which I think is very kind of sweet and sincere here. These young men came into the glass daily and played basketball. They wanted to participate in our tourney, but funding was an issue. A local car detail business sponsored them. They were perceived as the underdogs from the beginning, small in size, last-minute team. Throughout the whole tournament, they were playing their hearts out, everyone underestimating them. They played a total of six games to make it to the championship. They're a very deserving team, so glad they won, and the winning prize. The Glass Recreation Center is so proud of them. So as you look at the improvements that you've done for the Glass Recreation Center, especially the basketball court improvements over the past couple of years, think about how that's touching especially the young men and young women that are going in there daily. And as far as, you know, practicing and bettering themselves as teammates and, and also improving their bodies and minds. And then also to the library. Friends of the Tyler Public Library, the Tyler Public Library staff, and were able to purchase books for children of all ages to receive as free gifts as they picked up their winter coat at PATH's Coat for Kids distribution a couple of Saturdays ago. More than 200 books were passed out to kids of all ages with the goal to foster literacy and a love for reading, for pleasure for children and families at homes. In the past years, the library has been able to donate the free book coupons for children to redeem at the library, but this was the first Coats for Kids event that staff were able to attend in person. More than 400 free book coupons were also provided this year to PATH staff to distribute at evening coat pickup dates throughout this month and through the winter. Library staff look forward to attending future Coats for Kids events and continuing to partner with PATH. And then finally, due to COVID restrictions, the Community Resource Officer Unit from the Police Department were not able to conduct their regular Silver Santas. However, they did want to, everyone to know that they are in their thoughts and prayers during this Christmas season. They took the time to sign 850 Christmas cards for residents at different senior facilities throughout our city. We appreciated their hard work and dedication to the citizens of Tyler, their thoughtfulness during this difficult time. And as I, just was, reading this, I was thinking about, in fact, we have one of them right here that signed quite a few probably of those 850 Christmas cards. And so, we're very appreciative of just, you know, the Police Department, our library, all of our city staff, really, especially during this season. You know, with the call-to-serve spirit that they have, share that with our community, and we're very grateful for them.
That it?
That's it, sir.
Thank you, Ed. We do have an executive session, should take 10 or 15 minutes, and the possibility is there that there will be action, so I'll read this. City council may go into executive session regarding any item posted on the agenda is authorized by Title 5, Chapter 551 of the Texas Government Code. Notice is hereby given that the city council may go into executive session in accordance with the following provision of the Government Code. Executive item under Texas Government Code Section 551.072, Real Estate Deliberation Regarding the Following. Discuss the purchase, exchange, sale, lease, or value of real properties, the public discussion of which would have a detrimental effect on the negotiation position of the city. So we'll go into executive session and be back in 10 or 15 minutes.